14 measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law on June 16th, 2021. This meeting will be conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance by members of the public will be permitted. People who wish to watch or participate in the meeting may do so by finding the meeting at First item on the agenda, which is the only item on the agenda, is a continued public hearing for the proposed downtown district bylaws, zoning map, and design guidelines. This public hearing is continued from July 19th, August 16th, September 13th. We, this is an additional meeting that's been added to our normal schedule with the purpose of focusing on the three pieces of the downtown. Sarah?
Um, there's just a kind of a pertinent question in the chat. Lisa was wondering if they should also call their meeting to order since they are having a quorum here present at the moment.
Let's do it.
Just going to. You're going to elevate the board of selectmen? And probably Mark Purple.
Yes, we coming over momentarily.
Just so you're aware, I believe the EDC also posted a meeting for this evening.
Yes.
So if you could bring them up also, so we can keep this moving. Lisa, are you ready to open your, put your, put your board in session?
They need two more, right? Are you all set with three?
We can't hear you, Lisa.
I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order then. So it's 7:07 and I call the Southborough Board of Selectmen meeting to order.
Thank you and welcome. Oh.
Who else needs to come over from EDC? Julie.
I think just Julie is the only other one.
Julie and Alan, is that a quorum?
So do they have a quorum?
No, not yet. Not that I can see. John would just sign down.
I got him, Sarah. Thank you.
He declined to be promoted to a panelist.
Sam Stiger is in attendance as well. He's, okay, selectman.
Getting an error message when I try to promote.
I'll do it.
Julie, I think it may be on.
I'm here, Chelsea. I've already been.
Julie is a panelist.
Oh, there you are. Good, great. I got an error message a couple of times. Sorry about that.
No worries, thanks.
John Wood is out there.
Yep.
I just questioned, okay.
He declined at first. I don't know why. It'd be a fun night in store. I didn't realize that was an option, geez.
Sorry about that. I came in earlier and I was still signed in as my housing authority meeting. And I came in as a town of Southborough and I was like, oh crap. So I tried to sign out of that. And then I signed back in, thought that I was still coming up as that and still screwing something up. And that's why I declined. I was like, oh my God, I'm doing it wrong again. Cause I thought I wound up being your administrator. So I apologize for jumping in, jumping out, and jumping back in again.
So EDC, your entire team's on that you expected?
Is, is Mareka on as well?
Mareka is there. She's, she's waiting too.
I got her, Sarah.
Oh, okay, thanks.
Maybe not.
I don't, I don't think we have a quorum though, in terms of members though, do we? We need four?
You have three.
Right. So we're, we're not a quorum yet. So I will not call me into order until we have a quorum.
So I, I'd like to get started and explain how we hope to proceed through this meeting. There's three sections, three components. One is the proposed language for the code. One is the design guidelines, which we received last week. And the third part would be the map. And I'd like to do those in that order. And the way I'd like to do it, although I'm open to suggestions, but the goal here tonight is to try to get through those three parts and have the planning board express our opinions and recommendations so that they can be passed on to the selectmen for the, the final product before it gets printed in the warrant. That's not to say that we can't change it after that. So the way I'd like to do this is start with the code and work our way through it by the planning board. And as we finish, when we finish going through the six and a half pages of the code, when we finish that, then we'll open it up to the selectmen and the EDC and the public. So as we, as you listen to the planning board members go through this and you want to make a comment or change or question, just hold that until we get through the whole six and a half pages. And then we'll do the same thing with the 21 pages of the design guidelines. If we get through all of that, then we'll move on to the, the map. So when, Alan, are you the, who's the chair of the EDC?
It's Rob Anderson, but he's absent tonight. So as vice chair, I'll be taking that role if and when it's necessary.
Okay. So when you get a quorum, just to be legal, you can tune in and we'll, we'll stop where we are so that you can call your board to, to order. And then we'll just pick it up again.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have all five planning board members here tonight. Let's start with the code. And it's the version that Julie sent last week, I think, with the recommendations. And the, the product I have here is the older version of the code language with the, with the proposed revisions in yellow and either crossed out or added. So this first page one, from what I can see, the code will describe the district as downtown district. And then we have the definitions. And let's move down through them to the mixed use development. If, does any planning board member have any questions or comments on the definitions before mixed use develop?
I did, Mr. Chairman. So the term dwelling units is used a couple of times in the code. And I think it's pertinent because like the mixed use paragraph you were just about to allude to, it says mixed use development, provided that each non, each red non-residential use in the development is permitted, is a permitted use under this section. And provided that the number of dwelling units does not exceed eight. So am I to take it then that the total number of units there would be nine? And that eight units are residential? Like, does dwelling mean residential? So that my suggestion would be to add dwelling to the definitions.
Um, that is defined in our zoning code. It's living quarters for a single family dwelling unit.
Okay. So your point being it wouldn't need to be added here? Mimi?
Um, it's already defined in the, in the code.
And that covers?
Unless you want to change the definition in the code.
Well, what you just said sounds like residential. So.
Right.
If that covers this, then I guess I'm all set. Thanks.
Done. I had one on the same thing that was still right there on the mixed use. It, it says that the inclusion of two or more dwelling units. So does that mean we're not allowing one? Like if someone has like Moro's Market couldn't put one unit above it because we're only allowing two or more?
I think it's just saying, Andrew, and I could correct me if I'm wrong, but in that we're looking at the mixed use. That's the conclusion. So a development that includes any combination of permitted non-residential uses and one or more dwelling units within a single structure. Provided however, that the inclusion of two or more dwelling units in a mixed development shall not be deemed a multifamily. I think that pertains to further down in the code. It's relevant because there's a, a use by special permit, which is multifamily dwelling independent of mixed use.
Okay.
So I, I understand the confusion as well.
All right. So we can do one. All right.
So going back, everyone's okay from the top words, which says downtown district, down through the definitions of microbrewery and, and, and now we're in the mixed use development comment.
I have, I have a one prior to mixed use.
Okay.
Um, I think we should add a definition for green space or landscape green space and make sure it doesn't say open space in the code because we have a definition for open space that conflicts with what we're looking for in this bylaw.
I, and Mimi, I think you're right. I think in the design guidelines, there's a, a sentence that says landscaped open space.
Yeah, that needs to be fixed.
Yeah, that, that stuck out for me too. So you want to add a different?
Version? Cause I thought, I know that on our, in our small group.
Julie, I'd, I'd like to have you make a note. And I want to get through the planning board members.
Yeah.
And then at the end of this, we'll, we'll go around and everybody will have a chance to. Uh, so make a note if you want to say something about this and we'll get, we'll get to it. I, I just want to make sure we stay on track with the, with the five planning board members. Go ahead, Mimi.
I'm sorry.
Um, you're correct, John. I saw that also and that needs to be fixed. But I think we should add a definition for green space or landscape, green space, whatever we're calling it in the, in the design guidelines and in the bylaw.
Uh, I've asked Karina to be the, the note taker for how we go through this. So if, so that would be, it, it would seem to me that that would be the first homework assignment that the planning board would recommend would be a definition of landscaped green space. Is that right?
That's my recommendation.
How does the board feel about that?
I'm okay with it.
Good. Go with it.
Any more questions or comments on the definition in?
Yeah. Maximum is misspelled in frontage occupancy. It's spelled Max-a-mom.
So is there a Max-o-dad?
Yeah, exactly.
So now we're down, we're at, at the bottom of mixed use development where the recommendation is to delete the words after non-residential uses. Has to do with the 10%.
So I, I mean, I, I had a suggestion overall for mixed use development. Um, and maybe it should be included here, but I, I would think that for mixed use development, that no more than 40% of the total building could be residential. Would be my suggestion.
So I discussed with the town planner earlier today saying that, basically saying that the first, the entire first floor uh, shall be non-residential. So that's similar to what you're saying, Andrew. So if it's, it's a three-story building, you'd have first floor would be commercial or whatever. And the second and third floor could be residential. That's 66%. So how did you get to 40%?
Well, I was using it from the standpoint of if it was only a two-story building, right? Then, and even if it was a three-story building, like 40%, I think an example that was presented to us too, uh, that maybe the first floor is retail, the second floor is office space, and the third floor is residential. Where I, I'm, I don't think, uh, we heard a lot of comments from residents that, uh, they feel that this is a, um, a way of just getting more residential building in the downtown. Um, and I think if we limit it to actual, if the building is going to be three stories tall, uh, whatever the gross floor, floor area is, that only 40% of it could be residential. So. And I've seen it and when I looked at some other towns, it was limited that way too. So that's why, that's how I was thinking.
Rest of the board? Opinion?
So I could add something, Don, just from a prior meeting that one of the concerns was having an accessible residential unit on the first floor. Whether that's feasible or not. Just throwing it out there so it's not forgotten.
Yeah, I, I remember that. And the, the, I think the current language allows for possibility of having the first, a small part of the first floor be like an ATM. And then the rest of it be an apartment, which could be substantial. So.
In regards to that, Don, I just wanted to point out that also it was, um, um, something that did address the distance that's either 30, at least 30 feet. If you're on the first floor, that the commercial space, um, and after we spoke, I actually saw this a lot. In, uh, in G3, it says the maximum depth of street level commercial spaces shall be the lesser of 30 feet or 60% of the depth of the building unless waived by the planning board. So when we spoke earlier, I, I, I had forgotten about that criteria. So I just want to point that out.
Okay, thank you. Keeping in mind what Andrew is suggesting, I'd like to go back to the document where it's suggesting that the deletion of the last part of that definition. How does, i- is the board in favor of deleting that?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
I think as long as we replace it with some language around to what Andrew is suggesting. So I'm fine deleting it as long as there's an addition that comes afterwards.
Mimi?
Um, I'm in agreement, but I think that, um, the ground floor facing the street shall be only for permitted non-residential uses could be, as you were saying, a, um, an ATM. Like with, with the skinny hallway right facing the street and an ATM and then the rest. So I understand why that, um, was removed. And I think we're all trying to accomplish the same thing, but I don't think that what's proposed does that. And I think, um, what Andrew proposed is more aligned with what I'm thinking.
The 40%.
Yeah. If it's a, if it's a commercial, if the intention of the bylaw is to promote commercial uses, then we should promote commercial uses and not, um, you know, have a building be 90% residential.
And, and maybe it should be 40% of the above-ground floor space so that someone doesn't try to include a basement.
It'd be a pretty wet basement if it was on Main Street. Hey, I guess you can do it.
You know what? We've, we've seen everything, I think.
Yeah. So, okay. I, I agree that if, if the purpose of this is to promote business, then we shouldn't be, we should be leaning in that direction and less in the direction of residential. So I'm agreeing, I'm agreeing with the rest of the board. Do we want to move on and uh, as a, as a homework assignment, propose new words at the end of this definition, similar to the 40%? Or do we want to propose those words right now?
I'm comfortable with those words.
And what are those words, Andrew?
That, um, the residential dwellings cannot exceed 40% of the gross floor area above ground of the, of the building.
Rest of the board?
Yeah, fine.
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
I'm okay with that.
As am I.
Excuse me, Andrew, did you include above ground in that statement?
He did.
Okay. Got it.
All right. So that, that takes care of part one. Uh, part two. Any questions or comments on part two? Part three?
Sorry, wait, Don, are you, are we on downtown district now, the actual bylaw?
Yes.
Okay. So in section A, two, the one I was talking about before, mixed use development provided.
No, I'm not, Jesse, I'm not there yet.
All right.
It, it just, if you can see on the screen, it's, there's a box that says part two.
I was following along on my own documents, sorry. Okay, got it.
See, part two, and then there's a, a M.
Yep.
Downtown district. Everybody okay with that? Uh, part three? Okay, uh, part four is, uh, on the screen now. And Jesse, you had a, a question on A2?
Yep. So provided that the total number of dwelling units, as Mimi pointed out, that means residential, does not exceed eight. So what, what are we saying the total number of units could be? Is the total number of units then nine? Or is it some other number? Maybe, I guess that question's for Karina, as you interpret it.
Are you using unit, are you referring to units as dwelling units or as units of use?
Well, units of use, including the dwelling units.
So ask a question one more time?
Mixed use develop, I'm just trying to establish, what is the maximum number of, of use units in this, in this scenario in A2?
Well, you can have as many as you can fit. And they only have to be by special permit if they're over 3,000 square feet of per establishment.
Okay.
You see what I'm saying?
Yep.
That's my understanding.
So I'm good, I'm good for now. It's, it does strike me a little odd that we don't stipulate the number of total use units, but.
Uh, yeah, that's what, where I was going to go. I would say that, because this is basically saying by right, someone could come in and do this and allow up to eight residential units above, uh, the building or the, the retail space. Um, I, I would suggest that number should be lower than eight before you go to a special permit. Well, I'd push for three by right. Um, and then anything above three would go to the, would it get a permit?
How did you get to the number three, Andrew?
Uh, I went one, two, three.
That's pretty good.
No, I just thought that made sense in terms of the size of the buildings we were looking at and.
And by right?
And by right, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, that's something that's been on my mind, not to jump too far ahead, but when you get into the setbacks and the restrictions on height, it would be nice to make it sort of congruent with the, the setbacks and the, uh, the size restrictions. So I'm inclined to agree with Mr. Mills.
Can I ask a quick question just for clarity? So when I read this and I, we've just gone through what the definition of mixed use is, 40% of the building, so you only have 40% to work with. So if you can squeeze eight units in or three units, or so that's what we're defining is whatever that 40% remaining of the building is. So I don't think there's any building that we can build that's going to have four, eight units within 40% of the space. So I, I think, I, I don't know if we're overly being restrictive here. I mean, it's just, it's just a comment because we have a lot of the specs throughout the entire document. So I don't, I don't know if we tag this and come back to it.
I think if you go down Park Street, the way, I mean, we haven't gotten to the map yet. But if you start going down Park Street and, um, using the current map, I think you could totally um, get a building big enough to, to get up to eight with 40%.
We're not preventing eight. We're just saying.
Saying by right.
By right.
Yep.
And then, I mean, the other thing too, there's a possibility of existing businesses just saying, oh, by right now, I could put up to eight units above my building if I, based on the floor space and everything. Um, I, I, again, I don't think that's the intent of this. I mean, it's supposed to be new development. You know, new businesses coming in that we're trying to attract, not just people taking advantage of, say, a new bylaw. I mean, you, I mean, Moro's could do it. Moro's Cafe could do it. You can, uh, Lamy's Insurance, they could do it. You could, you could put units all above that.
But we do call restrictions onto building heights.
Yeah, we haven't gotten there yet.
Right, that's what I'm saying. Should we tag it and come back and just kind of see the, the holistic, like, what's in front of us? Because I feel like as we're picking apart, we'll come back to this. So I'm just wondering if we should tag it and as I come back to, once we see some of the other specs that are throughout the document.
Okay, I, I'm okay with that. I think that's part of how we should go through this. I, I just, Mamie brought up or read the definition of dwelling unit. And I think it was referred to a single, a single family. And I'm wondering if a single family is one person. And if it's one person, and a proponent wanted to build a lot of very little dwelling units that would be too small for even two people but could be rented out to a single person. If dwelling unit and single, single family means one person. But let's, let's move on.
Families defined also.
And what is that? What's that?
Any number of individuals related by blood, marriage, or adoption, and not more than six individuals, so not so related, living together in a single household. So it could be one, if it's any number of individuals.
Okay. All right, let's keep moving down. We're still in part four.
Don, can I ask one question regarding A one?
Yep.
So all uses permitted in the residential districts are A and RB. And again, this is under permitted uses. I just want to clarify that in the context of A one right there, does this include uses by special permit? Or is it understood that all uses permitted in the residential districts are in A, RA and RB that are also permitted? It's not saying that any of the uses listed that are permissible, whether it's special permit or not, it's strictly saying that permitted uses here are the permitted uses under RA and RB, not ones that require a special permit at this point. Right, Mamie, you agree?
That's how I read it, yeah. That's how I read it.
Yeah.
So a detached garage, garage is allowed in RA and RB. So as an example, a detached garage for a car or truck would also be permitted in downtown.
Yes, if it falls in residential A, part A, one through ten, which lists the permitted uses such as one-family houses, religious uses, public non-pro, public non-profit, town or government building, renting of rooms, mobile home, construction, it, it reflects that list. A to N. Hard A to hard N.
Okay. I think. Okay, if we're all clear with that, we'll keep moving down to the bottom of page two. We're good with that. We'll move on to page three. Any questions or comments on page three that?
Yeah, multifamily dwelling up to twelve units.
Which, which number is that?
C seven. Do we want to discuss that or evaluate? Twelve units, pretty big building.
Yeah, I would think if anything, it would be a maximum of ten, which would be four units on a first floor, four units on a second floor, and two units on a third floor if they went that high. Assuming there'd be roof angles and everything, they, it would have a sloping roof. I, I think it should be no more than, up to ten units. And just, just so we don't lose note of what I was talking about before about the limiting the number of units for a mixed use up on number two. We just want to, if we are going to change it, we have to change the number up here because it says it exceeds more than nine.
These are the, these are the by our own special permit, so these are not by right.
I know, but if we're gonna say, then it would be anything greater than three would need a special permit.
Oh, I see. Go back and make sure you have the.
Right, we just got a line, that's all.
And I'd feel more comfortable if it said not to exceed ten instead of up to ten.
I would agree with that.
Multifamily?
Number seven.
I'm good with that.
And then formatting wise, elsewhere, we use the number. If we use the word like T W E L V E, we would have the numeral next to it like we did.
Yep.
In the mixed use, the letter, the, the word two and the number two. So the same with, yeah, okay. So where were we with that one? Changing twelve to what?
Ten. On number seven, multifamily dwelling, not to exceed ten, number ten, comma, T E N units. And then I think we come back to C two as we parallel A two.
Is the board okay with ten, going forward with ten?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep. Okay, and Mamie, did, I mean, Marty, did you want to go back to?
No, I think it's just a note to us when we get through holistically, we need to jigger to, to Andrew's point, A two is C two. Whatever we, we fall on.
So just to be clear, C seven, planning board members are recommending multifamily dwelling not to exceed ten parentheses, ones or parentheses, units.
Yep.
Okay.
Let's keep moving down the page.
I feel my Shopsey tug on D one, I don't, if I don't get the rest of the board, I won't hold the support on this, I won't hold it against you, but it would be nice if accessory apartment was by right, in my opinion. I don't quite understand why we need a special permit from the ZBA for an accessory apartment.
Would that be because it's required everywhere else in town to go through the ZBA?
Right, well, the point of this district is to do things differently, so. This is an opportunity to loosen up on that one.
So then that.
I agree.
So then every residential building could buy right in the downtown, have an accessory apartment, one accessory apartment that could get rented out? Is that what you're saying, Jesse?
That is what I am saying. Yes, sir. At least bringing it up as a discussion point. Because we have Shopsey for a reason, and that's because there isn't enough affordable housing in town. This is an example of something that could be changed to improve that.
Would that actually go towards our affordable housing stock?
No, I don't, that I don't believe now. Karina, correct me if I'm, you know.
No, only if they're an affordable unit.
You'd have to have a deed restriction on it.
Correct.
So.
If they want to make it an affordable accessory apartment, I'd be okay with it, but I don't, I don't think everyone should have a way to an accessory apartment.
I'm in agreement with that.
Yeah, actually, I don't disagree with that either. If it's, if they're, if, if, if they want to have it as an accessory apartment and have a deed restriction on it, that's actually even better than my book.
But there's benefit to go through the ZBA. And it's not, and, and if you remember how they do it, they, and I know Andrew Dennington is on listening, so, but they look at not just the apartment, they look at egress, they look at parking, they look at how the vehicle would be added to the lot and exit the lot if, if it's going to be a new driveway or a new, a new point on the public way that a vehicle would be entering the public way if that's going to be safe. So it's not just the apartment. It's, it's those things that go with the apartment that somebody's got to take a look at.
Well, that's fair, Don, but there are design guidelines that go along with this that I think address some, some of your concerns.
So how would, if somebody proposed an accessory apartment and and there was concern about the parking spot or the ability of people to, you know, enter it, like a bulkhead or something, who, who would? Or who or how would, if it's by right, how would it be denied?
By the chief enforcement, the, the building inspector. Just like he's gonna have to do for everything that's by right, he's gonna have to refer to the design guidelines and the code and make sure it fits.
And then it's safe.
So by right puts a lot of onus on our building inspector, which is another conversation, but if we're doing by right for anything, you know, why not broaden it for this?
There's also a component related to the septic system. Be aware. There's also the aspect of a septic system, being able to handle.
Yeah, but Karina, I mean, that applies to everything that's by right.
Correct, yep, just pointing out that, don't forget, there's, water health has to report back also to the ZBA as it relates to wastewater disposal.
So I think I heard Andrew say that accessory apartment would be by right if it was deed restricted as affordable?
Yep.
I'm wondering, and I don't disagree with you, Jesse, and I think that that's a broader discussion overall to loosen up the restrictions on accessory apartment. But by definition, it's an extension to a single-family dwelling, and I'm looking at the downtown, and I don't see any single-family dwellings. I see one. So it wouldn't, I don't know if it would even apply down here.
Well, hold on, we haven't talked about the map yet, right? When you go down Park Street and almost to Foley, there's definitely another one down there. And when you talk about the split lots.
Can I just interrupt for a second? I saw Alan raise his hand, so I just asked, is there someone here to promote? Are you going to call your meeting to order?
No, sorry, I was looking to comment, but there's no other EDC members in the attendees at the moment, so we'll, we'll, we'll just comment when it's our turn to do so. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Mamie, you're saying in the, in the current Village Business District Zone, there's only one single-family home?
Yeah, I see two-family, three-family.
What are you looking at?
I'm looking, I have a a spreadsheet that Karina did a long time ago on the whole downtown and what all the uses are and all the lot sizes and everything. Look, going through the uses, and I, I only see one that's listed as a single-family. In this, in the split lots, like those that are on Lattice Squama, unless I mean, those houses wouldn't be applicable because the split lots at the back of the lot and the less restrictive can't encroach more than thirty feet into the more restrictive. So if you're thinking the houses on Lattice Squama could have accessory apartments from this, I don't think that would work.
Jesse, if there's only one, do you still see the need to have that by right for one house?
Nope, it's a moot point.
Okay. So we'll leave it as is, I think, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, but I think that was beneficial to air that, air that out and recognize that the shadow of Shopsey was upon Jesse for a short time there.
Forever for me.
Let's move down. We, if we're done with page three, we'll move on to page four. And we have minimum setbacks. And then the maximum. And then number five, there's proposed revisions. Are we good, one through four? Yeah, down to, through four?
So I, I just want to throw it out there, you know, because I like the design guidelines pertaining to parking. So not jumping ahead, I'm just saying, we want to keep these setbacks in mind and maybe come back to them in the context of the design guidelines and look at increasing them. That's my only comment for now.
So we're on number five. It's proposed that we zap the point three five as of right and so on and replace and add that Okay, the blue, the blue text is a note. This is that, Karina, what's the term? The stepped?
Tiered.
A tiered.
FAR.
Yeah, a tiered FAR.
In the yellow highlight.
Yeah.
Yeah, the blue was just some background discussion.
Right, yep. So I think you had an opinion on, on this tiered approach, Karina.
I did, well, I, 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 I was thinking about the, what relates to this is what came with this bylaw from Julie Conley, were two PowerPoint pages which discussed what maximum lot coverage is versus FAR. Okay, and the example they used was eleven Main Street. And when you talk about lot coverage, it's not just the building footprint that they're talking about, they're talking about the building itself and any impervious surfaces. So when you say a lot coverage of eighty-six percent, that means it's eighty-six percent of the lot is considered impervious. The building footprint, parking lot, the walkways. When you talk about FAR, it's looked at a little bit different. You're basically just looking at the gross floor area of the building. it's looked at a little bit different. You're basically just looking at the gross floor area of the buildings compared to the total lot area. And it does not take into consideration directly the parking area, the walkways, um, patios, hardscape outside of the building. So traditionally, the south row dimensional requirements refer to an FAR. Uh, the percentage which is recommended by Judy, and I understand why Judy Barrett recommends it, um, but it's a different way of looking at, 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 uh, lot coverage. So if that's what you're talking about, I think that it's, it's, you know, the planning board has to decide, um, conforming with other criteria, if that's important, with the other zoning districts, how they use FAR, um, to change for this particular um, district. Um, I think that's the comment. If I'm missing something, Don, that's what I was.
No, I, I think you, um, you, along with, um, Sarah or Marnie putting these uh, examples on the screen is a big help. So go ahead, Mimi.
Um, a couple of things. Um, lot coverage includes all impervious surfaces if it's divine, i- if it's defined as such. And, um, there has been no definition. If you look at other towns, some towns are ju- lot coverage is just the building, some are all the in- include all the impervious surfaces. So that's, uh, that's not, it's not necessarily including all impervious surfaces. And my thought is that, um, you know, zoning can't be looked at in a vacuum. All of our, the rest of our code is FAR, and to have this, um, small district be something else, I think just doesn't make any sense. And I wouldn't be in favor of changing it. I wouldn't be in favor of the, um, of the, um, of the tiers either. I I wasn't really in favor of the point three five, um, by right, so I'm certainly not going to be fa- in favor of something larger. This has been sold as, you know, a small, uh, rural downtown, and we keep increasing the building size, and the, those two things don't go together. That's my opinion.
So going back to number five, it says maximum floor area ratio. What? What would you recommend? Mimi? Because what we have before us is to delete what's originally in there with the point three five and adding a tiered. Is there something in between that or different than those that you would recommend?
I would leave it or reduce it if, uh, if others on the board wanted to do that, but I definitely would not increase it.
So it, you would recommend, let's say, point three as of right?
Yeah.
Go with that.
I think that reverts to our original suggestion, which was to keep it at like around two point five, point two five or point three. So I'd be in favor somewhere in that range. This has been one that we haven't been able to gain agreement here.
And then what about the maximum? Keep that in with a new number or the same number?
Um, I would keep it point five by special permit.
Everyone else?
Fine.
Go with that.
All right, so, uh, Karina.
Yeah.
We're, it looks like the board wants to keep, keep the floor area ratio as is, except changing the point three five to point three zero. And not going with the tiered approach.
Got it.
And then keeping the maximum of point five by special permit. Down to number six. Um, getting rid of the contiguous and I think we, uh, when we went over this last week, it seemed like, uh, everyone was cool with that.
I, I would leave it.
Shall be continuous. What about the sidewalks?
Well, so it's twenty percent of the lot, and then half of that has to be contiguous, so it's only ten percent. I can't imagine that you won't be able to get a, uh, a walkway in on the other, on the rest of the, the frontage. It seems a very small percentage of the lot. And it says, um, unless the planning board approves a different placement. So if there's no way to get a walkway in with the contiguous open space, the planning board can say, okay, you can put a walkway in.
Would it also be, um, possible that you know, instead of a, a tar or concrete sidewalk, that a, a landscape architect could propose, uh, bricks, cobblestones, and define those as part of the landscaping?
Yeah. Oh, and on this also remove the open space, should be landscaped green space. Yeah, right there. So in our definition, we could put that, that walkways could be part of the, uh, if they're not, uh, impervious or something, could be part of the, the landscape green space?
Like, p-stone or some type of more primitive, less stable, but, um, maybe more attractive than pavement.
Yeah.
So going back to the landscaped open space, it would read landscaped green space. So you're getting rid of the word open and putting the word green in there. Is that right?
Yeah, correct.
And keeping contiguous?
I, that would be my recommendation. Otherwise, you get little dots all over the place.
Uh, I'm okay with that, but you, you recommended, um, if we do a definition of green space to include uh, sidewalks that would be not paved or concrete or large stone slabs or something like that. So we, we would, when we define landscaped green space, we'll address that.
Yeah.
Rest of the board?
Go with that.
Okay.
So we keep contiguous and change the word open to green. And has, and then as we get further on, we'll define landscaped green space. Moving on to number seven. Down to the bottom of page four. Um, Andrew. Let's see. Here's where the twelve feet and the eighteen feet and the forty feet.
Oh, you, you're moving to number eight? I thought you were on seven.
Well, I didn't hear anything, so I was.
Okay.
Do we want to go back to seven?
No, no, I, I'm, I'm with you on, so maximum building height, I'm, I'm not comfortable with forty feet, I think it should stay at thirty-five.
So.
I agree.
So it, then we'd have to change the, the maximum, well, maybe we wouldn't, but if you had eighteen feet for the first floor, and let's say ten feet for the second floor, now you're up to twenty-eight, and ten feet for the third floor. I mean, you're, you're at twenty-eight, now, now ten feet for the third floor, you're at thirty-eight, which is over thirty-five.
I, I don't think eighteen feet's needed for the maximum for the first floor. I didn't get there yet.
So you want to change the forty feet to thirty-five?
Yep.
How about the minimum floor height, first floor?
Uh, minimum, I would say, I mean, uh, ten would be fine with me.
So and then the maximum would be fifteen?
Yeah.
So floor height, is that the, uh, from the floor, which would be wood, concrete, tile, carpet, measured vertically to the dropped ceiling? Or the structure above? Because above these ceilings or above is usually ductwork conduit.
Yeah, it depends how you build it.
But is it measured to the structure? Or is it measured to a drop ceiling? Probably be the structure. Because i- if this, if the structure is, uh, if you measure it to the drop ceiling, get a couple of feet above that, and you, and you, you'd never get to thirty-five feet, you'd be way over that. So it must be to the structure.
Yeah.
So what I'm hearing is eight A, the number forty would be changed to thirty-five. Eight B, the number twelve would be changed to ten. And eight C, the eighteen would be changed to fifteen.
I'd be comfortable with that.
Rest of the board?
I'm fine with that.
I guess my question is if we're again promoting commercial use, what is a traditional commercial use ceiling height? So if you're going, walking in, it, it seems like, I don't know, I don't know if we're, we're making it too restrictive on the first floor. Not too restrictive, but you'd be able to get to thirty-five feet and have a first floor commercial space.
I mean, if they still want a eighteen, but I think that the key is not to exceed thirty-five overall. You know, you're going to have eighteen on the first floor, then it just limits the, the other two floors. But I mean, I think we saw that before when we were looking at, uh, possible, uh, building on the downtown before, it's just, it was too big.
Yeah.
And that wasn't, that was less than forty feet.
Right, because between floor and ceiling of each floor, it's not just straight, you know, nine foot, nine foot or ten foot ceilings, you have about at least a foot of dead space in between that you have to count towards the opens, you know, the, the floor to ceiling height. You see what I'm saying? If you start at, if you say.
The, the structure thickness would be at least six inches probably, or more if you're using, uh, steel trusses, steel beams.
Yeah, yeah, I know in my house, when you look up at the cellar ceiling, you know, it's probably twelve, eight to twelve inches at least of, um, stringers.
I mean, firstly, I'm fine with just saying you can't exceed thirty-five feet. And the other two don't, uh, they can figure out how to do it.
Yeah, maybe that's the way we do it. I think we're trying to limit it to the I didn't even think we wanted three stories, but I think the thirty-five feet makes sense, and then someone comes in with a design structure that meets the thirty-five height requirement. I'd be fine with that.
Yeah, I don't recall the purpose of the minimum and maximum floor gra- you know, um, ground floor height. Did that have something to do with the outside of the building and the facade? Or is that independent? Like, was there a, there was there a certain look or theme that?
Let's, um, let's have the EDC comment on that before we, uh, move on to the design guidelines. So let's make that a, when we open this up to, uh, the selectmen and the EDC. But what I'm seeing here is if somebody wanted to build a thirty-five foot high building and part of the first floor would be a say a twenty-foot, um, atrium. Some, some type of very high architectural room that was, um, it could be retail, but we've all seen these buildings where you walk in and this, the, this part of it is, you know, has a cathedral ceiling or big arched ceiling in there that gives you a, a feeling of, uh, you know, you're in a big space. So that might be why. But let's, um, let's see if the EDC can explain that, we'll come back to it. Otherwise, we are recommending getting rid of eight B and eight C and just changing the number forty to thirty-five.
Sounds good to me.
All right, Marnie, Mimi?
Yes, yep.
Yep.
We all set with number nine?
Yep.
Let's go to page five. Okay, with that?
Yep.
Let's go to page six. I think one of our meetings, there was a concern about number three there, thirty feet or sixty percent. But it does say unless waived by the planning board. Number four. And then number five, that part about the planning board may adopt a guidance document interpreting the chapter forty B guidelines as they apply to development under this section. I think we stated a long time ago that that's outside of our expertise relative uh, to forty B, that's more the, the ZBA, and I don't think there's any benefit to, um, saying that, whether it's the planning board or the ZBA. Plenty of information on forty B. I'd like to recommend that we delete that.
So you want to strike, um, after the word document, just strike interpreting the chapter forty P guidelines?
Give us the whole sentence.
No, the whole sentence. The whole sentence.
In consultation, okay.
The board okay with that?
Yep.
H. And now down to part five. Major site plan approval, that's still there. Part six.
I have one question on part five, Don.
Yep.
So, um, in a practical way of looking at this, if somebody comes in and they need a major site plan approval in the downtown district, so if somebody comes in, we have the downtown district, and they trigger major site plan, they're simply applying for a special permit under one seventy-four dash ten point two. Unlike with the BV district, where historic precedent said that there was a site plan approval and a special permit for building in the BV district. This is strictly a major site plan would, would be the special permit. It'd be applying for a special permit for major site plan approval in the downtown district.
Only for a use requiring a special permit.
Correct. Right, so if it's in the list of uses that require a special permit triggers a site plan based on the thresholds. It's strictly just a special permit. The site plan approval would be a special permit. It's not two things, it's not a major site plan and a special permit for the downtown district.
So that, that's how our, uh, business village is written now, that site plan is by special permit.
Right.
Although we do it two things, that's, that's the language that's in the, the buil-, uh, Business Village District now.
Right, so am I to assume that when an applicant comes in with a use that requires a special permit for major site plan approval? Do I advise them that they have to submit a major site plan application as well as a special permit for downtown district site plan approval? Like we do now with the BV district, even though it's written the same. All of the historic applications in the BV district are two application. Major site plan and a special permit because you're in the BV district.
I, I would, I would recommend that that's what we're saying.
Okay.
Two.
That's my understanding, yeah.
If we're ever overruled on that, we would still retain, uh, the ability to require one special permit. But the two special permits have worked.
Yeah, it's actually a site plan approval and a special permit. And, and I say that because if you look at section one seventy four at the beginning of the zoning, um, it, it talks about how that, um, all uses in buildings for which off-street parking is required, other than a one and a two family dwelling shall be subject to site plan review by the planning board. That's one seventy four dash eight C one. Right, so it says all uses in buildings for which off-street parking is required, other than a one and a two family dwelling shall be subject to site plan review. So I just want to be clear that there's site plan and then there's, because you're in the downtown district, you have to also get a special permit for those special permit uses. I got it, you, you already answered it, I was just going on, sorry.
Down to part six. Parking. And then the little bit that's on page seven.
Sorry, I just had a quick question about parking. Um, so is it clear to the rest of the board and the town planner that items one, two, and three, all of those are pertaining to off-street parking?
Um, no, that wasn't clear to me, I was gonna bring up the same question.
Because it says exceptions to downtown. Off-street parking requirements for development in the downtown area comply with section E, ex-, above, except for the following uses. And to me, these should all be off-street parking.
I, I don't know, I think a restaurant. I mean, I, I view the overnight. Anyone who's staying overnight, Jesse, is really for off-street parking. You know, so the dwellings and bed and breakfast, you know. Anyone who's spending the night at a bed and breakfast, I would think we need to be off-street for plowing and whatnot. But if it's a restaurant, I mean, I think could use. Hopefully they still have off-street, but a combination of on-street.
And just to speak to your question, Jesse. In section one seventy four dash twelve, parking and loading regulations, part E, it says parking requirements, off-street parking spaces shall be provided according to the following schedule, and that's where it lists all the different uses and, um, the parking requirements for those particular uses, whether it's residential restaurant, office space. And what the warrant article is proposing here is to insert after that part E, a part F that says these are special parking requirements for the downtown district. Outside the standard part E parking requirements that are already included in the code. For example, number one is dwellings, two spaces for each dwelling unit. Well, our standard parking is two spaces for each dwelling unit for one to two bedrooms and three spaces for each dwelling unit with three or more bedrooms. What this part F is that they provide, proposing is to have reduced for that use in the downtown district. Where they're saying two spaces for each dwelling unit, regardless of how many bedrooms. And my comment is it you may, you have to be careful because you will run out of parking downtown, it's a tight area and these lots are small. Some may be larger, but I just want to point that out, that was gonna be one of my comments. That, that part F specifically for downtown district that's inserted after this part E that we are is reducing the parking requirements in the downtown district from what we allow right now, and it's just spelling it out.
So, do we need to add dwelling to off-street spaces for each dwelling unit? Plus one off-street, off-street space for each eighty square. I think seven eighty is important. Put this on mute.
Yeah, there's a lot of feedback, we're picking up a lot of conversations.
So maybe if we're not, please turn that off on mute. Anyway. So dwellings, two off-street spaces for each dwelling unit plus one off-street space for each eighty square feet of floor area devoted to a customary home occupation or for professional use. And then, uh, bed and breakfast, one off-street space for each guest room plus two off-street spaces for the owners of the premises. Andrew seemed to have a different take on number three, but I think to Karina's point, there's only so much off-street parking downtown, it's not a huge area.
Yeah, just from a pragmatic perspective, so let's just go back to the question if they did want to put in eight units and it's also, you know, that is representing a forty percent of the space somehow, they still need to provide sixteen spaces on that, on that, uh, minimum square footage lot. Like the math doesn't work based on kind of what the requirements are for parking. I mean, I, I'm fine with lowering the number, but I, I think a lot of the math just, it doesn't all calculate, like I don't think anybody could actually go up to eight units on a unit that's thirty five feet tall with the, the requirements that are set forth. With nine and a half foot parking spaces, kind of all the requirements that they have to meet to be able to comply with these things, right?
I see your point.
So are we leaving number one, two, and three?
Well, it all depends if you're assuming there's on-street parking available and if you're willing to take the risk to um, include that, uh, or that would be available, for example, the, just the bed and breakfast, one space for each guest room plus two spaces for the owners of the premises. And when you have, look back at our standard language there, um, for hotels, motels, boarding of rooms, overnight accommodate, one space for each room accommodation plus one space for each two employees plus one space for each four hundred squi-, uh, square feet of public meeting area and restaurant. So I guess it's a little bit of a wash with the employees and the owners, if they're considered they're the employees and they don't have additional people. There may only be two people.
I, I just don't think we can rely on any on-street parking, especially during the winter. It's not allowed.
Agreed.
Right, so Dawn, don't you think we need to add on the off-street language before, before it, throughout these sentences?
Can I ask a really dumb question? Can, can you define off-street parking as I'm he, I'm reading that, is it's responsible for their lot to have the parking on the premise, correct? So-
Correct, it's on the parcel. That's being developed.
Okay, so I'm confused where we're going with the off-street parking stipulation.
So I unders-, I understand what Jesse's saying, that it sounds like this section F is exempting these uses from off-street parking. I'm wondering if there's a way to put it in that E. Instead of adding off-street, off-street, and off-street to one, two, and three.
Karina, the current E tells how many, how many spaces do we need per dwelling unit?
Dwelling units are two spaces for each dwelling unit containing one to two or two bedrooms, three spaces for each dwelling unit containing three or more bedrooms, plus one space for each eighty square feet of floor area devoted to a customary home occupation or professional use. So there may have been an assumption that there aren't going to be three-bedroom units, but you can't really tell that.
I wa-, I wonder if we could put, um, in that sentence off-street parking requirements for the, the development in the downtown district shall comply with section E above except for the reduction in off-street parking for the following uses. So it's clear that it's off-street parking and not that it can, other parking, on-street parking can count for these spaces. Does that accomplish it, Jesse?
Can you say it one more time, Mimi? That was good, I just didn't catch it.
So off-street parking requirements for developments in the downtown district shall comply with section E above except for the reduction of, um, off-street parking for the following uses. Or except for the off-street parking requirements for the following uses.
That's certainly clear as opposed to the two sentences.
That works, thank you. Are you all set with that, Karina? You cool with that?
Everyone agrees to add that?
Yes. But you got it, right?
I have it, I'll check with Mimi, um, tomorrow for the exact wording on that, I have most of it. Unless you want to say it again slower. I think I have it.
I'll shoot you an email.
Okay.
And then, um, this, uh, part seven is, uh, to establish the district by revising the zoning map. And in this case, and this is for everyone, I hope, to listen, it's at this point required that if we're changing the name of the district, we have to revise the map. And if that revision only consists of changing the name of the district, that's what this is about. To just change the name. Everyone okay with that?
It would be adding the district, downtown district to the list that's listed on the zoning map and then changing the color of the downtown BV district or whatever the boundary is to that specific color applied to the downtown district.
Right, it would be changing the name and a color, but this does not propose any revisions to the boundaries of the district at this time.
To my understanding, that's correct, it's, it's a generic that whatever is decided on the zoning map will be reflected on the zoning map, but this one is just generic.
Yep. Everyone okay with this?
Uh, I don't understand what I'm agreeing to there. You're just saying that right now, we're not saying what the zoning map's gonna be. We're gonna get back to that at the end.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't gone there, we may, we may, uh, revise the boundaries or things within, within it. We may add to it, we may subtract from it. But right now, this language in this warrant article is to, uh, add this new district to the map, which would then result in a name change of the village business district in the downtown to downtown district, and it would get a new color. That's all this is about right now. All set with that, Andrew?
Yeah.
So if we're, and that's it, we've gone through the, uh,
We just need to revisit.
Yeah, we gotta go back to that eight units. And I think the way we left it, it was being proposed to reduce that number to four?
Three.
Oh, that's right, that's, you told us how you arrived at that number. And I think what is it Marnie saying that the math kind of forces that number to be reduced anyways? Based on all the other requirements.
Yeah, and I, I mean, from my perspective, if we're gonna do by right, uh, and allow mixed use, anything over three residential units, I think should get a special permit.
Does the rest of the board agree with that, to change the number? That the number of dwelling units does not exceed, and it says eight right now, and we want to change the eight to a three? And this is?
I'd say the only thing that doesn't work there is that shop C math. Which is the twelve point five percent. You'll, you'll never get there by right. Just, I think it's up, fine, that's fine.
So you're saying it's fine that we change it to three?
I am.
Anyone else?
We lose Jesse?
No, I, I'm fine with it, if, I mean, uh, to Marnie's point, you can still do up to, uh, a ten-unit multifamily building. So. that would still, that would apply to that. I'm okay with it not applying, not being applicable in a mixed-use situation.
So just to be clear, A2, you're proposing, provided that the number of dwelling units does not exceed three. And that's just because, and it's, and this falls under the by right quote section.
Right.
That more can be had under a special permit.
Right, and then under the special permit one, we say if what, where is it? C2, mixed-use development that includes non-residential use that is permitted use under section blah blah blah, but with four or more dwelling units.
So it's just changing the threshold of what's by right to what's special permit. It's still doable, it's just pushing the jurisdiction.
Correct.
And where does it say by right?
Permitted uses.
Yeah.
A2.
So the remaining 40% of the building for each non-residential use cannot exceed three units. And I, I would say three or four.
Well, it's gotta be because we put a limit for when we say a special permit gets put on, so it's either three or four, because we gotta say
Right, right, no, that's what I'm saying, like, I don't know if three is overly tight and we just do four. And then it's five or more in part for the per, special permitted use. I understand your point, you want to drive the commercial use of the building and not have the residential dwelling units. So I, I support that in general context. I think it's gonna be impossible to even get to eight.
The thing about four is that's when the affordable kicks in. So I think it would make sense to be three for by right and then four and more for special permit. So then all of that, that can be reviewed by the planning board along with the affordable portion.
Although affordable is only 12.5%, so it wouldn't actually hit one, you wouldn't even get one unit with four. So I think it was, the back, that was, that math was done on eight units.
Unless you round up.
Unless you go to 25% for the four. So it's at least one unit.
Yeah, it's 12.5%. And four is a fraction of one, so it's one unit. Like, I read section G5 to be basically four units or more, one of them's gonna have to be affordable.
Right.
Okay.
So we're gonna change that number from eight to three.
Sounds good.
On A2, part A2 becomes units not to exceed three.
Three, yep.
Okay.
And then C2, four.
But with four, yep.
So we're changing the number nine to four.
And the word nine to four.
Yep.
Yep.
Are we done?
Close.
All right, I want to open it up to the selectmen or the EDC, whoever wants to go first. If you're, it would seem like if you're trying to explain something that would be appropriate, if you're trying to change the mind or the minds of the planning board, the only way I guess you could do that would be to present something that we're unaware of that could make us feel that we need to make a change. Otherwise, I think what you've heard tonight, you may not agree with, but it's, it's a, what you're hearing tonight is clearly reflection of the direction that the planning board wants to go in relative to the article. So turn it, oh, whoever wants to raise their hand, EDC or selectmen? Who wants to go first? You guys decide.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
EDC, can you hear the board to the worst, I think, please go ahead?
All right, thank you. Um, just quickly, the Board of Selectmen is discussing this tomorrow night, so I'm not gonna add a whole lot down. I just wanted to say that I'm generally in support of the changes you've made, but the board will be discussing your recommendations tomorrow night, so I'll kind of leave it at that. Other than, I also wanted to thank you for going through this and making a special meeting to do it, it was very much appreciated. So I will leave it for me at that for now, but again, thank you, and the board will discuss it tomorrow.
So you're on, Alan.
So just to confirm, if we have opinion on your opinion or opinion on your discussion, that's not what we're here to talk about. We're just here to offer clarifying points of view on the specific items in text that were listed.
Well, I, we know that a lot of work went into this. And, you know, for example, floor area ratio versus percentage. We've been going over that for the last couple of months, and the board seems to be pretty firmly in favor of floor area ratio. So let's not go over that again, even if you don't agree with it. But if there's something new that you could present to us or explain to us that would help that, that would show that what we've, what we're recommending here and there doesn't make any sense, then we'd love, love to hear that.
So I don't, thank you, so I don't have, I'm not gonna bring up anything about FAR. I don't have anything to present net new that you haven't seen, but my sort of reactions to what we've experienced or taken part of in the past hour and 40 minutes is that it appears that we're, to me, it appears that we're trying to bring a set of standards and guidelines and texts closer to what we already have in place, which are part of what we have in town now for our, for the, for planning board guidelines. And I think the purpose of this is supposed to be for a special downtown district, and it seems like we're almost bringing this closer into a line, we're almost neutering this and bringing, and making this more restrictive to what we already have, which seems to me to almost obviate the need for doing this all together. And so maybe I'm not interpreting what we're doing today the right way. So while I understand we don't want to make this a complete super-developed area, because that's not what this is about, that's not the character of Southboro, it just also seems like we're almost being too restrictive to bring it in place with what we already have. So it's an opinion and that should, it's up to the board here to, to, to take in, so.
Well, that's certainly a, a good comment that the selectmen can go over tomorrow night and will, I'm sure that the five planning board members will look at it in that light. But if there's nothing else, then we'll move on to the design guidelines. Any other questions or comments from selectmen, EDC?
Don?
Don, this is Sam.
Okay, Sam.
Quick comment, just to be sure I understand something. I thought during prior conversations on this, there was interesting conversation around the possibility of a a living unit on ground floor for an owner, let's say, or operator of a retail establishment or a ground-floor apartment for a handicapped person. And am I correct in understanding that with the discussion tonight, that now is not a possibility here?
That's not the way I understood it. I, I had originally, I think, stated that the whole first floor should be non-residential, but I think, I think it got reworked so that there's still a possibility for a first-floor residential unit.
Okay, I just wasn't sure how that wound up, so that, as long as that's the case, I think that's a good idea.
Let me, let me see if Karina agrees with that.
Yes, under mixed-use development definition, the intent was to leave the highlighted sections stricken and add something to the effect that residential dwellings cannot exceed 40% of the gross floor area of the above-ground of the building. Above-ground of the building.
So that does not restrict the first floor from having a residential unit?
It does not appear to.
Okay, I thought Andrew was talking about floors two through whatever above that, so as long as that's there, I understand, and thank you.
Yeah, that was part, but that's not the way it was left. I think we left, left it the way Karina said, which is, you know, it doesn't restrict a residential unit from the first floor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is Julie?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Morrison, thank you, planning board, for going through this again. My, my one concern is that, you know, as we're going through and trying to make compromises or trying to make sure that we're not allowing something that we're uncomfortable with and is not in line with the vision that we have, we're, we're putting in restrictions that sort of undermine the intent of what we wanted to do in the first place. And I think that by adding so many things like a 40% restriction on on residential, I, I, Marnie pointed out, and I think she's correct, that would not allow for a three-story building with mixed use on the first floor to, to happen, just by math. I think the same is true with reducing the height to 35 feet. Somebody asked a question about, you know, where are those numbers, 12-foot minimum for ceiling height, 18-foot maximum for ceiling height? That's just sort of the standard for commercial space. You want it to look big and, you know, big and open without being too high, because obviously, you know, we're a, a small area. So if you were to have, you know, a 14-foot ceiling and then want to put two stories above it, it, it gets, it gets very crunched to be able to do that in 35 feet. And I think we discussed with our, our zoning consultant that that, that might not be possible. So I think with these restrictions in place between those two items alone, we're saying we're actually not allowing for a three-story building to be put in place as all three boards, you know, agreed to at a couple of our meetings. Also, regarding the FAR, I just want to clarify that if we have, as even if we kept at a .35 FAR, a two-story building on any lot would only be allowed to cover 17.5% of the lot. A three-story building would only be able to cover 11.6% of a lot. If we were to reduce it further to .3 of an FAR, that would allow for only a 9% lot coverage of the building on a three-story or a 15% lot coverage of a two-story building. Even on a one-story building, that's only a .3% lot coverage. I know, Donnie, that you did not want to talk about this much further, but I really implore you to look at the graphic that we provided and look at the example, which is the .5, which is, you know, what I'm proposing be, it be changed to, at least in the tiered approach. Because i, i, think about it, do you, I just, it makes no sense. Like, it just doesn't seem logical to go through all this effort to allow mixed use, to allow certain by rights, and then put the restrictions on it, which would allow never to have the option to use the zoning bylaw, because it is next to impossible. I just, I don't think we want buildings in town that only have a lot coverage of, of, of 9%. That just, it just doesn't make any sense, it would look ridiculous. So I, I really implore this committee to, this board, to reconsider that and to, and to look at some of the examples. The reason that I thought a tiered approach made sense is because in my head, you know, when I'm thinking about development downtown, my go-to, the easy one to think about is Two East Main Street, just because that's the only real blank slate we have, we have right now. So, you know, when I think about putting a building on that, that is a three-story building on 9% of the lot, or even a two-story building on 15% of the lot, that just makes no sense, you just can't do it. But I did understand some concerns about, you know, several people raised voice concerns about what could potentially happen at the end of Park Street. Again, I know we're gonna talk about the map separately. So that is why I devised the two-tier approach, because the FAR that was proposed and the, the, the argument for keeping it small was to prevent overdevelopment of that lot. So I, that's why I proposed the two-tier approach, to make sure that any lots that were on the larger size would be adequately restricted, while lots that were, you know, the more traditional lots that we're gonna have, and again, we don't have a lot of space downtown, you could actually do something with, this isn't, nothing could be done there based on the, on the bylaw that you, that you guys have, are proposing with these changes by right. So it really undermines sort of the whole initial, original intent of why we're going through this exercise. So again, I do appreciate the efforts, I am more than willing to compromise. I think a lot of the things that were, were, a lot of good suggestions came out of tonight. I love the, I, you know, the compromise of saying, okay, regarding the contiguous space, as long as, you know, if a, if a pretty, you know, cobblestone walkway could count as landscaping, then yes, that solves everybody's problems and makes everybody content. And, you know, a, again, I think a lot of good things came from that. I, I have other comments as well, but, you know, the, the FIR is the one that I really wanted to press on, because I, I do think that that's really important. I think a .3 FAR just undermines the entire premise of what we're trying to do. Also, the reason that we're pushing lot coverage, again, if everyone wants FAR, I'm not gonna throw out the baby with the bathwater, but, you know, according to our zoning consultants, FAR is just sort of an antiquated way of doing things. All new revisions and bylaws that are coming out are using a lot coverage ratio instead. As, as we saw, you know, 11 Main Street has an 86% lot coverage. I'm happy to, to define lot coverage as impervious space, so to make sure that that definition is clear. I, I think that's the cleaner, easier way to do it, I think it makes the most sense. To me, it doesn't, it's not a problem to have a definition, to have a, a metric that's different from downtown. That's why we're doing this exercise, is because we're saying downtown should be treated differently than the rest of, of what, than the rest of the town, that it is unique, it is special. So to me, it makes sense to use the more modern approach and one that's sort of more easily explained. People can picture a 70% lot coverage. It's hard to picture what a .3 FAR is and explain it. And I think, again, I think it just logistically is, would make a ridiculous-looking building that wouldn't work anywhere. But, you know, so I, I think lot coverage makes more sense. And again, I'm, I'm not concerned about the inconsistency in this particular instance, because we're saying downtown is different. We're modernizing the bylaw to get rid of references to night watchmen and allow for something more modern, so I think that it's appropriate here. That's all.
Does the, does the board want to go back and revisit that point three? Or let it stand and allow the ED, not allow, but expect the EDC to present what we just heard to the selectmen tomorrow night? This, at this point, our product is a recommendation. The final product is what this Board of Selectmen will put in the warrant. So if the selectmen agree with the planning board, So if the selectmen agree with the planning board, then the point-three would be printed. And if uh, the selectmen don't, then a different uh, either the tiered approach uh, or something else would go forward. And I think that's the purpose of uh, this, this group effort. Certainly appreciate the input and, and um, really, the, the excellent uh, recommendations that you did, Julie, uh, to get, to get us this, this uh, document. So any, uh, let me, let me just a- ask the board again. Does the board want to revisit the point-three tonight? Or let it stand and move forward?
I, I would say to let it stand and reiterate that um, this is supposed to be a small, you know, small-town rural downtown and um, having huge buildings, the point-five on that lot that Julie brought up would, would allow the same-sized building that's on the corner of eighty-five and Southville. And I can't imagine anyone would think that's appropriate for, for the downtown. So if we want a, a small-town downtown, I would keep it as-is. And the, in the thirty-five foot is uh, recommended for a village-style streetscape. And in the ten towns that I looked at, they all had a thirty-five-foot um, maximum height.
Anyone else on the board? Let it stand?
Let's say let it stand. It's Marnie.
I'll say let's stand.
Okay, so, and uh, yeah, I agree, let it stand. So um, I would hope that Alan and Julie will present your side of the, the opinion to the selectmen uh, tomorrow and see what they want to do with it. And again, like you said, you, you guys are willing to compromise, and I'm sure the planning board is, but these are our recommendations going forward. Is there anyone else before we move on to the design guidelines?
Dawn, do you want me to um, finalize the landscape, greenscape, green-space definition? Um, with the understanding that um, it's to include sidewalks that are in some form or fashion not paved, something to that effect?
Yeah, I think that's what we agreed to.
Okay. Thanks.
Anyone else want to comment? Last, last chance for comments on the language of the zoning uh, code uh, warrant article. Okay, we'll move on to um, the design guidelines. And as I was reminded today, the design guidelines um, are important uh, so that the townspeople, when they vote for this, will have an understanding, or, or, or have the whole picture. Um, and not be, a- and have knowledge of what these design guidelines are as part of the whole package. And I'm glad we have them. And I think we have to thank Sarah for the really nice-looking, easy-to-understand uh, guideline, twenty-one pages. Um, and so what I like to do is go through these page by page, which, by the way, is um, part of the uh, is pretty much the way the thirteen separate sections are. So go through them section by section. There's some typos, I think, that we've picked up on. Um, so let's, let's do that. Let's, let's start. On page one, we have uh, the picture of um, the community house. So on page two.
I'd like to add, Dawn, just on page one for reference, um, that the document should be dated, not just in the footer, but an official date above the footer. So that at some point, it's accepted by the planning board. There's a second date, so the date of the document, and then accepted by planning board, such-and-such a date.
Right, and um, the public should know, everyone should know, that these guidelines is our first pass at this, and that um, they can be revised without the town meeting's vote, because these are guidelines. So a planning board meeting, we could put, we could put a revision to the design guidelines on planning board agenda. And in a public session, um, look at some revisions, additions, deletions, and um, and if the uh, proposed mo- uh, motion to change things carries, then we would have revised design guidelines, simply by the vote of the planning board in a public meeting, properly advertised. So these can be changed. Go ahead, Marnie.
Do, do we have language then in the warrant article that would suggest that? Because I know in our lighting bylaw, we do have something that refers to the design guidelines, but it's not as a package. So I think we need separate language to be able to um, tie, un- untie the two.
And you're saying that that, there's a good example of that in the lighting?
Yeah, I can, I can pull that. Sarah and I maybe can work on the side and send that over.
And give that to Karina, so that when she beams this over to the selectmen, which is going to have to be, like, right away.
Yeah.
Very good. Let's go to page two. Talks about purpose, the map, process, middle materials.
I'd like to just point out, under um, overall goals and organization, to be consistent with the remain, with the document. Um, two, three, four, under part five, facade design, it should say facade design um, slash entrances. And I'll mark that on my.
Oh, yeah.
Need to match the title of the.
Yep. Anything else on page two? Nothing? So page three has uh, a missing word in the first sentence, the overall goal and purposes, the word "of" should be inserted before the word "Southborough." Everyone okay with that?
I'd also like to add in the third line down, it should say from, uh, protect and promote the downtown historic small-town main street, and um, probably delete "Southboroughs" in the third line, the third line in the first paragraph. See, it says protect and promote downtowns. Get rid of the word "Southborough." Protect and promote the downtown's historic small-town main street.
Couldn't you just call it the downtown district, since we're proposing to rename it anyway?
Yeah.
Okay. So here an objection, that's what we'll do?
It was just clear. Also, um, on the last um, third line from the bottom, second paragraph, uh, let's see, it says, um, if you start at the fourth to last line of the paragraph, downtown district, and will provide the planning board with criteria for the review and evaluation of projects proposed in the downtown district during the site plan review and special permit process. Because the design guidelines will affect not only site plan, but also the downtown district special permit. So after, proposed in the downtown district during the site plan review and special permit process.
Yep.
Okay.
There's another place further in, I think that that similar uh, revision needs to be done. When we get to it, I'll see, on my notes, I'll see that.
Okay, and then just to continue there, um, the last sentence, these guidelines are intended to supplement the town of Southborough's zoning regulations for the downtown district, one-seventy-four-dash-eight-point-one-two, comma, delete the word "and," uh, site plan approval, one-seventy-four-dash-ten, and the one-seventy-four-dash-ten-point-two downtown district plan approval should be added after one-seventy-four-dash-ten. So it should say "and" the downtown district plan approval, and articulate the following, because it's those three components.
There's no objection, we'll keep, keep moving. Anything else on page three?
Under number four, um, there's text in parentheses that says guidance of what would be historic structure, specific buildings, or built-before date.
That was a question for uh, for Michael, sorry.
So that should be deleted?
Yeah.
Number four should end with buildings.
Yes.
And I thought that, um, just an idea, um, that in, in aligning with the Southborough Historical Commission on what is historic, perhaps a, a list could be attached as an appendix to this for um, historic structures in the downtown. That just isolates those historic structures that end up being in the boundaries of the downtown district. Just a suggestion.
I, I did ask Michael for that. I'll uh, reach out to him and see if he can compile that list.
So that would be a note to, when we send this to the selectmen tonight, I mean tomorrow, that we may be adding that. So the selectmen and the EDC would know that we're intending to, um, before it goes to print, have that list of historic buildings available.
Okay.
Anything else on page three? Move to page four. Which is the map. And we'll get to that later, but.
I just had a comment for that structure, that page, um, that below the map, it should include a note on what this map is and a date for reference. Whatever map gets placed there should have, um,
The downtown district.
Yeah, something that says this is where it came from, or this is what it means, and this is the date of it, so that if it gets updated in the future, um, we know what is being changed to, or where it came from.
And we can do that before October fifth.
Yeah, that's just a nitpicking thing.
So the next page is page five?
I have some comments on this page as well.
I do too, and it's go ahead, Karina. I'll see if it's consistent with what I'm saying.
Okay, since it's short, I'll just read from the beginning. The proposed, the proponent must submit the proposed project for design review as part of the site plan approval, I would insert process. Or, and, and then the special permit with site plan approval. Um, section one-seventy-four-dash-ten-point-two downtown district plan approval process. So it's very clear that we have a site plan approval, so the proponent must submit the proposed project for design review as part of the site plan approval process, or the special permit with site plan approval, section one-seventy-two point, in parentheses, the downtown district plan approval, section one-seventy-four-ten-point-two process. So that's very clear. It's the site plan approval, and then the special permit for site plan approval process, under the downtown district, one-seventy-four-ten-point-two. Then continue, submittal requirements for projects in the downtown district shall be in accordance with Southborough zoning bylaw site plan approval section, insert section, one-seventy-four-dash-ten, or section one-seventy-four ten-point-two. So that shouldn't be ten-point-one, because ten-point-one is the BV district site plan approval. Uh, to continue, um, so, or section one-seventy-four-dash-ten-point-two, if special permit is required for site plan approval, so strike the word "with" and insert "is required for site plan approval." And the rest of the sentence is fine. So basically clarifying and inserting some words to hone in on the sections that we are talking about.
That's consistent. It's a little bit different than the way I was going to reword it, but I like it was better. And then if, if we agree that any time we put the numbers, one-seventy-four-dash-something, we put the word "section" before that, I think that's what you were doing with this.
Yes.
But then if we go back to page three, we have reference to one-seventy-four-dash-eight-twelve and one-seventy-four-dash-ten, but we don't have the word "section." So either we
Yes.
Either we use the word "section" before every, any reference to the code numbers, or we don't. And I would recommend that we do. So anywhere in these guidelines that lists a section of the code, we use the word "section" before that.
I agree. These could also potentially be live links at some point. Um, in a digital document, you could actually link those sections to the code. So if someone was looking at it online, they could click on it, and it would open up um, that in, in a web format. So just something to think about for the future.
I tell.
Yeah, I like that, like that idea. So uh, that's one-seven, that's page five. Uh, everyone okay with that? Silence means okay. Let's go to move, uh, let's go to page six. That's the old Southborough Arms on Main Street, nice picture.
I have a comment in the last paragraph.
Okay.
Um, it reads, the architectural character of new buildings should respect the character of adjacent existing historical buildings in the Southborough National Registered District. Um, if this is referring to the Southborough Centre Historic District referenced in the state letter that we received for national register nomination and acceptance, then that term "Southborough National Registered District" should match whatever that um, references in the national register nomination. So it, Sarah, do you know if that's the case? Was that reference to that letter?
Um, I can, I can double-check, but I agree with you that it should obviously be consistent with the letter.
Because I don't know what Southborough National Registered District is. So.
Um, so Michael actually took the lead on this section. Um, I was really kind of the, the person who put it all together in terms of formatting. Um, so that's, that's more of a question for him when it comes to content, but I'm happy to, again, reference it with the document that we received.
Okay, it's not a big deal, and I can check with Michael tomorrow morning.
Sure, sure.
Hold of him, and if that's the case, we can ju- just insert the right term there.
Yeah, that makes sense.
If that's okay with the planning board.
Silence means okay. Silence means okay. Anything else on page six?
Yeah, the, the only thing I would say is that should, um. Or it says should respect the character of adjacent, maybe you say the majority of adjacent. I, I don't want someone to like just. Identify one building that might be adjacent and say, well, I'm, I'm going off that one. You know what I mean?
Where is that word, Andrew?
In the last paragraph, the architectural character.
First line, okay.
So it shouldn't, it shouldn't, someone shouldn't be able to just target one building and say, oh, well, this one's adjacent to me and, uh. This is what I'm gonna design my style or please. My design guidelines are off this one a budding neighbor.
So add the word character of the majority adjacent.
Or what if we just put, what if we just put nearby, nearby existing historic, because either it's adjacent.
Yeah.
Oh, so instead of adjacent, say nearby.
I think so.
Okay. Is everybody okay with that, the word nearby instead of adjacent?
Anything else on page? Six. Move on to page seven.
I think we just have to change it to downtown district, take the business village out.
Yep.
And then on the second bullet. On downtown should be capitalized. Second bullet, second word. That's all I have.
Anything else on that? Move on to page eight. I got a couple. Uh, no, those are my own notes, I'm, I'm okay.
I have something on that page.
Okay.
It's, um. Um, in the title of this page, building placement and orientation to match the table of contents that should be in ampersand instead of the word and. Then, um. That's all I had, I did have to look up several of those words like pent roof. And that means single sloping surface in the second bullet, um, so I learned a few things viewing this. That's all I had on that page.
Anybody else, anything more on page eight?
Not here.
Move on to page nine.
I had nothing on page nine. And these photos are for illustration purposes only, right? We don't have to identify where they are, so it doesn't. You know, really highlight. Whose it is, okay.
On page nine, um. The last bullet. Says the building facade should clearly define. Commercial ground floor spaces where they exist and differentiate differentiate. Through articulation, the ground floor. Does that make sense to everybody? Think the more I read it, the more it might make sense.
Well, because massing is an architectural term, when you're designing, um, a building, it's like. The overall big picture of the building. It's like all the. The, not the nooks and crannies, but like, um, the allowed building that you see there, the yellow one. It's the main building and then you have kind of an L off to the side of the section that's set back, I think massing is the component of all those. Big sections that make up the full building. So I think the articulation is for. You know, breaking up. The different floors from the outside from a look, so that you don't have this one big massive concrete block or. That's my opinion.
Okay. Anything else on page nine? Go to page ten, setback and green space. So here's another.
Go ahead, John.
Here's another one where we use the word and.
Yes, and there should be an S on setbacks, should be setbacks.
It's gotta match the, um.
Table of contents.
Table of contents. And then up on the top. The third line down, it says bylaw. Bylaws regulate setbacks and the. Capital S. I think that should be a small s.
Also in the one, two, three, four, fifth bullet. Second to last line, it says that, um. At least fifty percent of the minimum landscaped open space shall be contiguous and located between the front building line. Should that be landscaped green space?
Yes.
Yeah, in green space up at the beginning there too. The, the third, uh, sentence at the top. Setbacks, change that to the small s and open space should be, uh, landscape green space. And then that, uh, fifth bullet landscape green space instead of open space.
Okay. Yep. And then a contact, in context, the very last bullet. Where it describes use of native species, et cetera, is encouraged in order to make gardens compatible, and that's the intent to encourage, not require.
Yeah, that was gonna be my question too.
Well, if we go further into this document, you're gonna see the words prohibited. And requ- and required, and I, I looked at those and I'm like, is, is the purpose of? These guidelines, are they, do they have the authority to prohibit? Or require? Or is everything, the majority of the words for this is encouraged or should? As we get deeper in, I'll, I'll show you where it says. Where certain things are prohibited. Or should this whole document be should? Rather than shall or encouraged rather than. Required.
Okay. That's all I had on that page.
That's page ten, anyone else on page ten? This might be a little bit nitpicky, but back on page ten. The brand of that bank happens to be the same bank that I work at. I just feel a little funny about that, I don't see anywhere else near any other brands being, appearing so clearly. So. If there's any way to obscure.
Could use another photo or.
Well, I, I mean, I don't have a problem with the picture, but if there's a way to just fuzz out, but make that brand fuzzy, thanks.
Sure.
Well, we actually had, um, a fair amount of discussion in the small group about, you know, potentially getting. You know, local photos or different photos, these are sort of some stock images that we took from some other, um, towns.
Um, we could, um, you, we can just gray that out over this title, the name of the building, right?
All right, so we're moving on to page eleven. Exterior materials. See on the very top. Says are required in the district. Let, I'll just mention that, and then further down, second bullet. It ends with prohibited. So again. Uh, do we intend for this? Document to prohibit things or to discourage? Or encourage? Can answer that. We can answer that later, but I, I just felt that, uh. What gives us the authority in the guidelines to prohibit something? And then also in that second bullet, plastic tile roofing. I'm no roofing expert, but, um. My house has a slate roof and I've replaced a part of the roof with, uh, real slate, stone slate. But in, in the process of doing that, I, I was looking at other. Uh, materials, including some of the ones that are used on the Burnett House. Or some of the Burnett buildings. And talking, uh, with the, uh, guys that were putting it in, it's not stone, it looks like stone, but it's actually a, um. I don't know, I don't know if you'd call it plastic, but it, it involves, um. Chemicals that, uh. I guess would fall under the. Definition of plastic. And they seem to be quite common, commonly used and instead of real slate. So, um, not sure where that came from, but, um. May have to take a harder look at that. But we could leave it, we could leave it for now and as we, uh. Do more polishing of this document, we could see if that's appropriate or a different term could be used.
I'd also like to point out that in the bullet one. Um, it says, um, consistent use of dominant building materials for the facade is encouraged. Rather than multiple materials such as brick and clapboard combinations, and if you look at the picture that's allowed. To me, it looks a little like it contradicts that. Cause you have brick and, um, solid facade. And I thought that maybe you would want to have. Change of, uh, facade materials to. Try and enhance, um, getting back to a historical look or, I don't know, I just, just, it stood out to me that you're calling for. Don't use multiple materials, but the loud picture should. Looked like it had multiple.
And I just wanted to comment in general, I do think that guidelines should be recommendations, um, and encouragement versus prohibitions or requirements, so I. I'm, I'm on that belief that they're guidelines.
So anywhere there's, uh, the word prohibited. Or required, we would soften that to recommended or, um. Discouraged or something like that.
That's what I would agree to, yeah.
Rest of the board?
Agreed.
I agree.
Yep. So are we gonna change the brick and clapboards, or are we gonna change the picture?
I think change the picture.
Well, is there something wrong with the way that picture looks that that's allowed i- in the downtown, I, I don't know, I'm not, I'm not getting what the issue is. Why you wouldn't have mixed. Beside like that. Is the goal to have one uniform look, then you might end up with something that's not allowed.
Uh, I'd rather, I'd rather, uh. Remain silent relative to bricks and clapboards. And leave the picture. Rest of the board?
I'm indifferent. I think it's fine to have both.
Same.
Just strike the first bullet and leave the picture?
It, okay, well, does that picture just compete with the next one, number five, where it says building and facade design should be harmonious with the immediate neighbors? I mean, that doesn't look harmonious with the immediate neighbor, because it has the overhang and the other one doesn't.
Good point.
Am I being nitpicky or?
Talking about the picture on the left, Andrew?
Yeah.
That's all one building, that's White's Corner.
Okay, but again, the next, the next sentence under five, building and facade design should be harmonious. With the immediate neighbor. And I think that picture contradicts that.
Where are you reading that, Andrew?
Scroll down.
On page twelve.
Oh, on twelve, twelve, okay. So that is the context of one building.
Yeah, I think it's harmonious, it's, the brick goes all the way across and it's, the, the wood is all white. I think it's harmonious, it's not exactly the same.
Okay. Never mind then.
So keep bullet number one on page eleven. And because it's an encouraging, uh, is encouraged rather than multiple materials. Believe it as is?
Sure.
Okay, okay. Anything more on page eleven? Let's go to page twelve. Facade design slash entrances. I didn't have anything on this page.
I didn't either.
Let's go to page, uh. Thirteen. Storefront design. Down on the. Sixth bullet. Just, uh. That little Y there. I didn't have anything else.
Um, I had a comment on the first paragraph, um. Should it somewhere say, um, comply with, um. Design by law, section one seventy-four dash eleven? I mean, we're saying all these things, or is that understood?
Well, the last. One of the last sections is signage.
What do you mean, John?
Well, you're talking about signage, but there's a whole section on that. Number nine. On page seventeen.
Okay, I think when I was reading the last sentence of the top paragraph here, it says storefront display windows that display products or services. Signs with the name of the organization, local business logos, hours, public service messages or displays of use. To any, to an activity in which the people are involved frequently during hours of operation are encouraged. I always feel like when you say all those things on a list, you should say, um. but note to comply with the sign by, or you know, reference should be made.
You're right, Karina. You're right, because some of those things, some of those words may actually conflict with the, uh, section in the code 174-11.
So maybe reference section so and so for, um, compliance or something like that? Or reference section for specifics?
Or just say are encouraged but must comply with, section 174-11.
Yeah. Okay. And then I also, on the second to last bullet, it says storefront lighting should be confined to highlighting signage. And the window display itself lighting that attracts attention to itself should be avoided. The same deal, but must comply with section 174-12.1. To reference the outdoor illumination. When it says storefront lighting should be confined to highlighting signage in the window display itself. If it's exterior lighting, it needs to comply, right?
Yeah, I like that idea as well.
Everyone good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, we all done with page 13?
And just a note from Michael too. He's chimed in just to say that all these pictures are placeholders, they were never intended to be final.
Thank you, Marty, I was gonna say the same thing.
Well, somebody's gonna get what they want in there before October 5th. Otherwise, please go to print.
Yeah, when I read through it, it made sense looking at it. Just that one didn't back there, but this one does, all the rest seem to, okay.
Yeah, so if there's any that need to be replaced, it's gotta get done soon. Move on to page 14. That second paragraph. There's an extra at in there, third word from the end. Uh, second paragraph. First line. All the way over. Keep going. Right there.
Tired.
Also, I felt that the, um, reference to state and local ADA regulations or other accessibility documents should be more defined. That, um, so that the person who's looking at this knows what we mean. Because we're saying in compliance with, in locations that are currently served by public sidewalk, projects should provide a sidewalk in compliance with state and local, if you just say accessible persons requirements or accessibility, as opposed to ADA, because ADA is, um, everyone uses it as a generic term, but it's American Disabilities Act. And I think that's a federal reference. And Architectural Access Board is a state, I believe. So I think we just need to clear up, clean up that state and local ADA regulations or other accessibility documents. Unless that makes sense to everybody.
Who would help us with that, the building inspector?
Yeah, yep, or we can look up on mass.gov. And see what they call the documents that are standard reference. And actually, Bill Sines had sent comments to us, um, remember early on? I could ask the ADA committee.
Yeah, I think both, you know, will apply, you know what I mean? Obviously, the federal regulation is kind of the end, and all be all. Um, and then the state regulation is, you know, in addition to that. So, so both need to be complied with, but happy to help revise the language so it's clear.
Or just generically say in compliance with accessibility regulations or requirements. Then you know it's, you know, with them.
So the board is gonna trust you, Karina, to clean that up?
Yeah, well, I'll find, Sarah and I.
Yeah, we'll work together for sure.
And then the last word in that sentence, it says, um, entrance facing the street and the road right of way. As long as that made sense to everybody. Located between the principal entrance facing the street and the road right of way, which is understood to be the town right of way? Or the edge of roadway, paved road, or back of curb? I just wanted to be sure. Provide a sidewalk in compliance located between the principal entrance facing the street and the road right away. Not that they, you know, if the town right of way is on the curb line.
Right.
Then they say, oh, I'm just bringing the sidewalk right to here and not to the, yeah. I think it's okay, actually, I just wanted to point that out.
All done with page 14? Page 15, doors and windows.
It should be an ampersand instead of and in the title. And then, um, one, two, three, the fourth paragraph. Last sentence again, it says window displays are encouraged, but visibility into the building from the sidewalk should be maintained. It may be overkill, but window displays are encouraged in accordance with the sign by law. In, insert the word in accordance with sign bylaws, section, et cetera. 174 dash something, do you agree with including that or is that too specific?
So I guess the clarity would be the display. What are we saying is a display? Because I could think of that as like a retail, like a mannequin versus a sign.
Okay.
So I don't know if we're overly meticulous in the, the language choice.
So leave it like it is.
Yeah. Yeah. And then in the first bullet, I think it should say street numbers should be located near the front entrance instead of address.
Oh, yeah.
And on the one, two, three, four, fifth bullet, entrances should meet the requirements of the Massachusetts Architectural Access Board regulations. And again, we'll check that, I think it's AAB, Architectural Access Board. Is the, is the proper name?
Okay. Go on to page 16, which is a continuation of doors and windows.
I have nothing there.
Let's go to page 17.
I don't have anything on this, this page.
Page 18. First bullet. The word awnings, oh, there's a Y in there. Before the word awnings, you got, you found it, Marty?
Yeah.
Yep.
And then I thought, um, you probably didn't have time to find some sample pictures of the awnings, but under bullet two, it talks about awnings of round or ball nose shape should be avoided. Maybe it doesn't need pictures, but if we had them, we could put them there.
Yeah, the more, the more, uh, the pictures are a huge help, uh, especially if people are more visual. And so, uh, we, we wanna get this, this document as close to, uh, you know, the, what we envision as the finished product. If we're able to do that between now and October 5th, we should do it. This, this document, I think, is going to, um, kind of put a polish on the downtown district code and give people a level of comfort, even though these are recommendations. It still kind of paints a picture of the direction that this whole thing is going in. Well done with page 18? Page 19. Has the word prohibited in it again?
Where is that?
Last word.
Oh, prohibited. Also cross off SH after lighting? I think that was your section, Sarah? Okay. And then, um, first paragraph. Second line. Outdoor illumination of the Southborough bylaws in the, I would insert associated rules and regulations adopted by the planning board. I would add the word associated before the rules and regulations. Just for clarification.
Okay.
That's all I had.
Anything else on page 19? Page 20, utilities and mechanical equipment, uh, there's SH there again.
And also, it should be an ampersand.
And we have the word must in that first line. And the third line. Plumbing systems must be concealed. Utility and utility buildings must be screened.
So we should say should?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, under the third bullet, it talks about units located in non-window openings. I didn't understand what that was. Is it air conditioning units? What kind of unit, units located? Does anyone have an idea of what that meant? What type of units?
Mechanical equipment?
Yeah, that would be any kind of mechanical equipment. So, you know, if you had, um, any kind of exhaust or any kind of, um, wall unit for heating and cooling.
So mechanical equipment units.
Sure.
Something like that, mechanical equipment units located in non- window openings?
Sure. Yeah, it's used in the first bullet, so that makes sense.
Okay.
All done with page 20?
Um, I thought maybe add under, is there anything regarding, um, utilities to be underground? Like when we require, um, in major site plan, when people are adding power to the building, that it's underground utilities? Is that something we want to point out?
So is that, cause if you're, if we're gonna do that and that's, um, would that be requiring the special permit and a site plan review? Or any of the by use? I, I, I think that's a good point, particularly if we have like, I don't know, like a brewery going in that might need.
We're talking about the same thing, Marty, right? Like when we condition and approval, it says, and, um, you know, essentially the wires are supposed to be underground, so they don't have old headwires.
So I think we should probably put it in here, so people are aware, yeah.
As a recommendation or as a requirement?
There's like a code reference, is that?
Yeah, I was gonna say code reference too.
So you're saying, I just don't recall off the top of my head, this is a reference to underground utilities. It must be in the subdivision regulations. I'll look through there. So we want to add a bullet. And say in compliance, so underground utilities and services in compliance with whatever I determine there. With section XYZ, okay. Does that make sense?
Yep. All done with page 20, we'll go to 21. Last bullet. Uses the word shall.
And then I thought, um,
You see that, Marty? The last bullet.
Right there. Should, yeah, got it. And then the second to last bullet, um, um, again, um, where possible, um, it should say in compliance with section 174-12 parking and loading. So parking facilities should be boarded on three sides with landscape buffer, including veggie. Maybe it's, you know, in conformance with the landscaping section of the bylaw. Because we have, um, in applicability and criteria for five or more parking spaces to have certain types of, um, vegetative buffer. Do you agree with that?
And I think that makes sense to, again, refer to that, that's already in our code.
Okay. That's the only note I had on that.
All done with the design guidelines?
So, and I guess since these are, you know, taking a more, um, you know, should tone, I would change the allow and not allow to encourage and discourage, I'm assuming.
That sounds good.
Yeah, I like that suggestion.
Encouraged and discouraged?
And, uh, you know, I, I just wanna say, Don, uh, if I can, Mimi and team Sarah, they did a great job on that. As you could see, there was a little lot of nitpicking that we did, but there was nothing fundamental. And I know there were others that played a big part in this as well, but overall, amazing job.
Yeah, it was worth the wait, uh, really.
Julie Connolly and, uh, Michael Wysham and Lisa Brusher.
Yeah, uh, great, everybody, I mean.
The A-team.
Yes, so, yeah.
I echo that, thank you.
If we're, if we're done with that, I'll open it up to the plant, to the board of selectmen and, uh, the EDC for their feedback on what we just went through.
Don, it's Lisa.
Lisa is still, is still awake?
I am.
Boring for us.
No, I just wanted to, again, kind of mimic what you just said, uh, thanking everybody that worked together on this. I mean, Sarah did an incredible job of, of putting it together and, uh, we couldn't have done it without her, so. And also just to commend the team that we had that, that just worked so collaboratively together. So that's it from me, but thank you, everyone.
How about Alan?
Sorry, had a hard time finding the mute, um, no, I don't, I don't, um, my personal opinion is EDC shouldn't be opining on, um, design guidelines. I think that's more to the purview of planning board and others, so, um, appreciate the opportunity, but, um, I'll pass.
Okay. Well, we're at a point, it's, uh, almost 10 o'clock. Um, should we go on to the map?
Oh, well, Don.
Oh, okay.
And, and Michael Wysham would like to speak as well, he's, he has some.
Can I?
Yeah, go ahead, Julie.
Sorry, and I don't, I don't have much to add, I just wanted to, again, um, thank Lisa and, um, and, and Mimi and Michael and especially Sarah, who is really the driving force behind this, you're awesome, Sarah. Um, thank you. I feel like we, you know, got a good, a really solid first draft. And as a few people mentioned, you know, this, this isn't intended to be something that's carved in stone. This is intended to be a guideline for the planning board to work with and to something that can have more flexibility than the, the bylaw, um, to sort of guide our vision going forward and be something that, um, provides enough flexibility to, to change a little bit with the times as needed. Um, you know, particularly with an eye toward things like Um, you know, particularly with an eye toward things like sustainability and making sure that, um, you know, as new, um, guidelines and best practices and best materials come to be, um, those can be more easily incorporated without having to go to town meeting and get two-thirds vote, which is why we, uh, cross-reference the, the zoning bylaw, um, to allow the, the planning board to have this, um, this opportunity to, 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 um, support the design guidelines. But thank you to this group.
Yeah, there's one other, uh, thing that could happen too, which is, I mean, if this document is really, uh, you know, we just had it, but um, the more we look at it, the more we hopefully get to use it. Might be something that other towns, like we went to Northborough and what, what did we do, Ashland or Hoppington? And, um, this may be a, uh, a next generation uh, type thing that, uh, the other towns would, would look and, and, uh, use. So pretty good. And, uh, Michael's next.
Yes.
Is.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, hello, everyone. Good evening. Hey, listen, I just wanted to add in one thing. Um, when I had participated with this group, I had suggested that there'd be language included in the bylaw that would make these guidelines the rules and regulations that would have actually the force of law. Um, I don't think there's a huge amount of worth in spending a huge amount of time on pursuing these guidelines if they're just that and they can't be enforced in any sort of way. Um, you know, I just think it's a very uh, dangerous sort of thing to give zoning by right and then not have any ability to force enforce some of the actions that, uh, go behind this. So I would encourage you um, not to move away from shall or, yes, from shall to should and try to consider what happens here if people are given these zoning by right opportunities and then we are not able to enforce any sort of background behind it. So, um, I just would caution you on that. Uh, that's all I had to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Um, okay.
I'm sorry, I have my hand raised. Can I just respond?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, I just want to clarify to Michael's point. The by right portion of the, of the, um, zoning bylaw is for the use. So that's actually divorced from the, the design guidelines, which show the design. So the only by right that is in this proposed zoning bylaw is the right of the use. So again, that's completely different from the design. We thought the design guidelines added, not subtracted from, from, um, the effectiveness of the bylaw because it, it makes sure that our vision of what we want downtown, um, is is papered somewhere. And again, it'll be to the, um, planning board's discretion to interpret and, um, implement the design guidelines. I just want to clarify that. Thank you.
Anyone else? So. Um.
Michael has his hand raised again. I don't know, Michael, if you wanted to talk.
Oh, no, no, sorry. I just didn't get my button to the best. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Michael. So if there's no more, we've done two out of the three, uh, pieces. We can move on to the map at ten o'clock. If that's the, um, if people still have gas in the tank, we can do that. The other option would be to bump it to twenty-seventh. I really don't want to do, but I haven't seen the agenda for the twenty-seventh, Karina.
Hold on. Uh, just quickly, the agenda includes, um, six to eight Turnpike Road modification to site plan, which is a public hearing. Um, we do have, uh, the downtown district public hearing continued there. We have three twenty-five Turnpike Road. Uh, major site plan and special permit for lit for Ken's Foods expansion. Um, and potentially an A and R uh, for Sears Road.
So the three non-downtown district, uh, items, the A and R, uh, it should, I would think those don't usually take much time. And normally, uh, for the first time, uh, public hearing for a site plan that, especially at Ken's Foods, uh, that's usually the first, the first, uh, part of the public hearing is the presentation. Um, and we try to keep that down to about an hour of presentation and, um, questions and comments. Um, and then six to eight Turnpike. Um, I think at our last meeting last week, um, I did receive some feedback that, um, was questioning if I was upset uh, about the status of that submittal, uh, to which I responded that I was upset and didn't want to waste any more time on silly mistakes and omissions. So the same thing would apply on the twenty-seventh. Um, that, uh, submittal is something that, um, needs to get wrapped up, cleaned up and wrapped up. So, um, I'm willing to go into the map tonight or, uh, bump it to the twenty-seventh. Open up to the board for, uh, your opinions.
Can we give it a half an hour and see where we get? And if we're if it's not settled, bump it?
Anyone else?
I was gonna say fifteen, but I'm willing to go to a half an hour.
Yeah, I think the most progress that we can make, the better, tonight.
I agree.
Very good. Let's move into the map, um, which is on the screen. Now, um, and then there was also the, um, what they call modules, mockups, mockups.
Mockups.
Um, and we received three, uh, butter, three Lattes Quama uh, emails recommending mockup number two.
Yes, and I just want to say, you know, my initial, um, response to those are, one, you know, uh, specifically said not to include the C S X parcel. Um, but I would say to keep it in. So that's just my two cents.
Can you point to the C S X parcel?
Tell me if I'm wrong. Is it this area?
One acre. It's right along the edge of Park Street. Yes. Yeah. Right along, yeah. But you can see it.
I'm gonna have to enlarge it.
It's the long thin.
Right here.
Yeah. The, yeah, the long thin strip. There you are. Yep, right there.
Now, why would you recommend to keep it in, Sarah?
I just think that its current use kind of dictates that, you know, it, it's staying in the district would be a benefit at some point. I just.
Sarah, what's, what's the shaded area?
Uh, outside of the purple.
The light, the lighter purple part?
That's the current, uh, zoning district. BV Business Village District. So this mockup number two, I think we're on number two.
Yeah.
Shows, um, excluding the split lots, Jesse. And the split lots would remain in the BV District.
So our, our, uh, options are to do nothing, leave the current, leave the, um, the district unchanged, the district boundaries unchanged, or to make changes. And what would those changes be? Um, so I guess, uh, at this point, um, is there anyone that wants to necessarily do nothing with the boundaries? Just le- leave them alone and have the downtown district cover the whole uh, district that is now called the Business Village District? Is there anyone that, that's locked into that? Or do we, uh, consider, uh, a po- possible revisions? I know that I'm open to possible revisions.
Don, can I just ask a quick question?
Yeah, sure.
There's a message in the chat that basically says that we, I showed the wrong parcel for the C S X parcel. Um, Sarah.
It's on the opposite side.
Oh. So, so not, not this. Where, uh, this right here?
I wish I could zoom in on G I S. I think it's the, so the if it's not the parcel along Park Street, then it's the opposite side of the track. Is that correct? I'm gonna look right now. I'm not in front of the G I S map. I apologize. I can't pull it up, um, right at the moment.
I will. I'll pull it up really quick.
Okay, okay. I could Google it, too.
To your question, I, I would definitely be open to, uh, changing the map.
Yeah, I support revision and, um, I could get behind uh, this map being shown now, map number, being referred to as number two. Marnie?
Um, I would agree with the exception that I don't actually would, I wouldn't really want to give C S X by right use to do anything with their property. So I think I'd cut that C S X property out, whatever that might be.
And Mimi?
I would stick with two.
Um, I agree with Marnie. I think that, um, leaving the split lots as they are doesn't, uh, take any rights away from the, the present property owners and um, doesn't open those residential lots up to something that we may not want. Um, so I would, I would go with two and leave C S X out of it.
Is that seems to, uh, uh, and I'm, I'm, I'm liking that also, um, except I think we need to clarify exactly the C S X lot.
So see it, the C S X lot is, um.
You want to share your screen, Karina?
Hmm. Perhaps, I could. I can, I can tell you where it is. You know where, um, twenty-five and two Park Street is? See this circle? See, see the, um, Business Village District?
Oh, right here.
You see that circle?
Five and two, yeah.
See the thin strip between that and the railroad? That is the C S X property.
So that runs all the way against the railroad?
It runs to, um.
Or is it stop here?
It runs to where Park Street starts to turn west near number, um, at the end of ten Lattes Quama. So it runs just beyond the end of ten Lattes Quama and it begins at number four Park Street. More heavily in front of two. So it starts at two Park Street.
Right, so we were, we were, you're right. Okay.
Yeah, we're on the correct side. It's, um, Assessor Map fifty-five parcel ninety-two. Again, it's to the northeast of, um, number two and number twenty-five Park Street, eleven and ten, uh, ten and twelve Lattes Quama.
Oh, wait, is the old storage area for Ted's Towing, was that part of the C S X?
No, Ted's, I believe Ted's Towing has its own. Um, so number twenty-five.
Marnie, where you just had the cursor. There's no marker on that lot. Right above where it says Park Street. I think that's where the old storage area is for Ted's Towing. A little higher. A little higher. Right, but yeah, right in there.
I don't think it goes that far. Hold on, I'm gonna check right now. It goes to, um, it goes to, um, at the northern property line of ten, it kind of peaks out at a triangle. Um, I was to say it. It's probably like, um, only like twenty percent in, um, along Park Street, along the number five frontage. It's only like twenty percent into the frontage of.
So where it says Park Street, the last letter of street is a T. And then there's an E and an E and an R working northwest. Where does it, does it end like at the R?
It ends at the, uh, the first E. So it goes T E E before the R. It ends right around in there. Just the Park Street ta- starts to veer off towards Lattes Quama. Just there's a, like a gore right there. Right where the E E T is.
So does this map show that C S X excluded from the zone?
No, it's showing it running through it. Predominantly, it stays in the BV District, but as you get towards, um, the northern end of the lot, it's, um, it looks like we're cutting across it.
What's the dark color?
The dark is the area of the downtown district that would exclude the split lots. Oh, thank you, Marnie.
I'm multitasking, but I think hopefully this will work.
I still want to lose my connection, so. So there it is, fifty. Right where your mouse is. If you hit the I button, hit the I icon and then select on the map and it'll highlight it. See the little, the I info, yeah.
Oh, wrong one.
Oh, wrong one, sorry.
I don't have that on my map. I can't see it because I think I enlarged it so much.
Oh, you should be, does it let you just click on the parcel?
No, very sensitive.
There it is, the I on the right.
Okay.
Above this pan here.
Yeah, now I gotta get over there, though. This is like not as easy as I would have thought.
Yeah.
Very temperamental. Gotta now find where I am.
Right where the railroad bends. There it is, right below twenty-one on the opposite side of the tracks. Right there. Right along with the gray path is right there. There it is. So that's the C S X property.
And going back to the, hopefully we don't lose that, but comparing that to the colored zoning map.
The mocked up number two?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can see where I think the purple, the dark purple line slightly cuts across the northern end of the railroad property, just slightly. See right where, right where the E E T is. I think it, it's very close, but I think it, it. Sarah, when you do that line, do you remember? Right.
I mean, I, I, the intention was to, uh, you know, include the entire parcel. Uh, these, you know, mockups, uh, were, you know, created and shared, you know, again, as like sort of drafts, but you know, that was the intention. So if it's, you know, when you zoom, zoom really close in on the, on the picture, um, you know, if it's not quite right, um, the intention was to include it, but if we want to exclude it, you know, that makes sense to folks. That's good, too.
So the dark color on the right is what's being proposed as a revision? That the dark color would be the downtown district?
Right.
Right, within, within the purple outline, the darker purple would be what would become the district. So the lighter purple on the outside, um, would be, just maintain its current zoning.
Business Village District.
Right.
So, the Business Village District that would remain would include the CSX parcel?
Yes, there, there would have to be a,
A slight change to the dark.
A line, right, yep, correct.
Otherwise, the dark purple is what's being recommended, uh, by the, I guess by the Planning Board and the three, uh, emails that we got from the people on Lattasquama Road today. Is that right?
Correct.
And is, is the board okay with, with that? Excluding CSX and excluding the, um, the split parcels, the light, the light purple? And is, so hearing silence, I'm saying, I'm hearing that, um, what, the board is, is okay with that?
Does it, just to clarify, the, the existing Business Village behind, uh, South Porthouse Pizza? I think, isn't that the area that we're looking at trying to work with National Grid to acquire? Is that currently in the Business Village?
It is. It's right where the mouse, where Marnie's circling the mouse.
Okay, yeah, I'm good with it, but I'm done.
So, is there anybody that wants to make additional changes, like subtracting any more of the current district or adding anything to the current district?
Can, can I just ask, does the purple outline, I just want to confirm, exclude all the split lots or just those split lots at the end? Are those the only split lots? The only and all split lots are excluded?
Yes.
It appears that way.
All split lots within this region, within this particular?
Well, split lots that were affected by the BV District.
Correct.
Which appears to be 10, 12, and 14, Lattasquama, and 25, Park Street.
Yes, and then across, yeah.
And 29. Okay, as long as it includes all, it's excluding all the split lots. We're not keeping some in and some out.
No, all are out.
And I'm not hearing anybody that wants to add new lots to the district at this time?
Correct.
Correct, correct.
Correct. So are we done?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
We have to open this up to the Selectmen and the EDC and the public. So let's go back to the, uh, the Selectmen. Once again, this map, the dark purple would be the, the new downtown district excluding all of the CSX lot. Um, Lisa, you still there?
I am, thank you. So I'll bring this to the board tomorrow night. I know when we had talked generally about this prior, um, we weren't in favor of adding any lots, so that's good. Um, again, I, I can't speak for the board. I can speak for myself. I think this is, is a great compromise to some of the issues that we've heard. So the board will take a position on this tomorrow night, done.
Okay, is Alan still there?
Yes, I am.
Have to get up in the morning to go to work?
Yes, I do have to get up in the morning and go to work, but thankfully it's, uh, just moving down to my, down to my desk.
Excellent, okay.
Um, I'm not sure what, when the opportunity is, but, um, Marek, um, on the EDC does have her hand raised to, apparently off her opinion, so.
You want to move to her?
Um, if, if, if the board would still allow?
Oh, sure, yeah. It's the EDC's turn.
Great.
You need to unmute. She has full privileges.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Um, thank you very much, uh, for discussing all these matters.
Hi, Marek, welcome back.
Thank you. I just have a, a question. First of all, I would like to know the reasoning, um, why you want to change the map, uh, why, why, um, and you're listening to the abutters to kind of, um, exclude all the split lots? We've also heard from residents, uh, in, who are currently in the downtown Business Village District who want to be included. Um, so I just wanted to, you know, get a better understanding of what your reasoning is. What are you trying to solve with changing the map? Thank you.
Well, we've also heard that in order, and this is part of the art and the science of getting a Warren article approved by two-thirds of the voters, is to try to keep it simple. Um, which is very difficult with this, but, um, adding to the district, I've been told, and I agree with this, is unnecessarily complicating. Uh, what we're trying to do can be added at a later date if this, if the downtown, uh, passes, uh, adding to it, um, would certainly be a lot easier. And what I'm also hearing is that, uh, those, those properties that are asking to be added to the district are not suffering because they're, uh, not in the district at this time. And that, uh, it can be addressed at a later date. So the emphasis is on keeping it simple and not, not having to go, go there. Open it up. Anybody else on the board want to, uh, add to that?
I thought that was a great summarization.
The other part about removing the split lots has to do with the, the neighbors. I mean, anytime we're doing anything with, uh, with zoning, um, you really have to focus on the neighbors and the neighborhood. And, um, you know, we've heard from three neighbors that would prefer to do it this way. Um, and it, it seems to cause no harm. And, um, again, would simplify the, the change. Um, I mean, I've also heard from people saying, why are we even doing Park Street? Why don't we just make this Main Street? But, um, really haven't heard a lot of, um, horsepower behind that, but that's some of the thinking. So there's all different views on this, but, uh, this seems to be the simplest approach that has, um, the intended, uh, uh, purpose of, of this change affecting the most important, uh, properties, I guess. Any other, uh, input from the board to respond to my, Marek?
My perspective was that particularly, just looking at the map, I, I kind of thought it was bizarre that there were properties that were split. And so really to have be in one or the other, um, certainly I'm not one of those homeowners, but I think it would, again, it simplifies it. You put residences that home, has, have homes in a residential area, and I just think that just makes sense. It helps to make clean lines in a map that was not clean. And if this is a solution that is accepted at, um, town meeting, I think it is a simple and direct way to accomplish that.
I'd just like to add to that, that, um, you know, one of Marek's questions is why are you listening to the abutters? We've listened to the abutters and taken a butter input in every matter I've ever heard as a planning board member.
Now, I listen, you listen to the,
The value of the abutters' input and opinions on all things related to town planning.
No, I, I understand you listen to the abutters, which is very good, but you should also listen to the split lot owners. That's all I'm saying. That's what I was, you know, I'm not saying you shouldn't lis, listen to the abutters. I think you should listen to all parties. You can't just, you know, listen to one party and not to the other party. And the other question I have, how is it making things more clear and easier when you now have three different districts? Because you, you create a new downtown district, your Business Village District now has a weird, you know, sections of residential lots and you have a residential district. How are you going to solve that?
My only comment to Marek is this was never our plan, proposed to us. This was the EDC's plan, and so we're responding to that. And we've listened to abutters and we've taken that all into consideration. And I think we've discussed it at length and ad nauseam at this point. That's my response.
And from my perspective, you know, we're, we're leaving the, the split lot owners with what they currently have. We're expanding what could be used to, um, what, you know, the, the recommendation was or the, the vision was for, um, really Main Street and parts of Boston Road. And we should keep the focus and the, um, opportunity for the development to happen there. So not expand it all the way down into, um, you know, almost a fully drive, uh, which wouldn't be appropriate for this type of development that we're talking, discussing opening up to. That's, that's my point of view.
See, John Wood is interested in, got his hand up. Hey there, Woody?
You just make it unmute.
Sorry, my button wouldn't let me unmute. I'm sorry, I apologize. Thank you guys for having me here tonight and, and going through all this and, uh, all the work you put in for the, uh, design guidelines and this. I just have a relatively simple question on the map. Um, I, I like the concept. You guys can, personally, this is me, not the EDC, is my opinion. Uh, um, but if you're gonna be keeping the BBB district in that, on the split lots, and then the new downtown district, the only thing that really changes on, uh, with the bylaw is the byright, correct? I mean, not that somebody can come in easily with, with, with the way you have the split map and do the exact same thing that worried the residents before. The only thing is now it requires a, a special permit because it's not a byright use. It's only the usage that a byright, I just want to make sure it's protecting the residents from what they think it is. Um, by, by keeping the BBB, because with the way the map, my understanding from, from Mr. Costa was the way the, there's very few things that will change um, with the new downtown bylaw versus what could happen there now. So keeping this the way it is or changing it, does it really alleviate the problem? I know it's a, it's, it's a minimal chance that somebody could come in and buy those split lots and develop there, but does changing this map to the way you're changing it, change any of that? Does that make sense? Oops, sorry, my dog's barking.
I would say yes, because, um, the byright uses, the multi, uh, mixed use in the multifamily housing by special permit aren't, uh, uses in the, uh, Business Village District. There are many uses in the new downtown district that are not in the current Business Village District.
Okay, so it would just restrict it from, from the mixed use, but it could still, somebody could buy it and put, I, I know the biggest fear from most people down there was a, a giant apartment thing going in there, like, uh, can this, well, doing it this way alleviate that problem for the residents? That somebody couldn't buy up that and, and then just put in apartments instead of mixed use? Could they do it as all residential? Because that seemed to be the biggest problem that everybody was concerned over was, uh, uh, a high-density apartment building type thing going in there. So now wouldn't be mixed use, it would just be residential. So what's stopping that is my question?
The special permit requirement.
And it's not a use in the Business Village District. So the only way to put any type of multifamily housing is a major residential development, which has all kinds of restrictions to it. Or an over 55, which also has restrictions to it, which probably wouldn't work in that, either wouldn't work in that, that area.
Okay, and plus it, uh, uh, please forgive my ignorance, plus the split lots, it goes to the more restrictive zoning, correct? For anything that was going, it, that would go in on the split law, it'd go more towards the rez A than anything else, even the way it's written?
Um, you can't, the less restrictive use cannot encroach more than 30 feet into the, the more restrictive use.
Thank you.
The other way, Mimi, the more restrict, oh yeah, you're right, the less restrictive, that's right. Sorry, confusing.
Thank you. That was, that was my only question.
Thank you, John. Anyone else on the EDC or open it up to the public or anybody? Selectmen want to have another bite at it? So,
Currently nine attendees, just so you know.
Karina?
And Michael has his hand raised.
Okay. Guys, I won't hold you. I just want to say, I think you all deserve sainthood. So congratulations for bringing this to fruition. It's been a huge, long process, and you've done a amazing job. And we salute you and thank you for all the good work you've done. Well, it's still gonna go to the Selectmen for the final draft, the final version. But you guys have been here through countless hours and countless, uh, iterations of this. Um, really fantastic work, and we thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? So, let's,
Can I just say one thing?
Yeah, go ahead, Mimi.
I just wanted to make clear that, um, we've listened to everybody. Anyone that's raised their hand and, uh, has commented, we've listened to. It's, I just want to make clear that the contention that we're only listening to abutters or only listening to this person or that person is untrue. Anybody who has come to a meeting and raised their hand, we've listened to.
So, uh, Karina, you and I spoke earlier. I asked you if you'd be the, the note taker of all these proposed, uh, final revisions from the Planning Board. You have those tonight. Um, and what's the plan for getting them to the Selectmen?
Um, I'm going to work on these tomorrow morning to make the changes and then email them to, um, Mark Purple and Lisa Bracio for distribution to the other Board of Selectmen members. I'll also, um, email them to the EDC and Marek as their coordinator. And I will copy the Planning Board members. So everybody will have the documents. Um, if I have any questions, um, if anything's not clear to me, I will reach out to one of the Planning Board members, um, and see if they can help me recollect, but I, I have, um, everything marked up and written down and should be straightforward.
Mr. Chairman, I may ask, have you taken a vote on this final map option? No, this is, uh, this is a product we've, we've, uh, we've been asked to review it, to review the three pieces, the code wording, design guidelines and the map, and, uh, present our comments back to the owner of the, uh, by, of the, uh, Warren article, which is the Board of Selectmen. So that's what we've done in a public setting. I don't think it's necessary for us to take a vote. Well, and then, But wasn't historically your consensus that this Plan 2 was your majority opinion? Well, yeah, I mean, the, the public, this public, continued public hearing reflects that. Every, every little piece of this, we went over and either commented on it, said it was okay, moved on. Okay, thank you. So, at some point midday, hopefully, uh, early afternoon, Karina will get that to the people she mentioned. And then, um, if we could, I And then um, if we could, I see Mark is still. Uh, on the screen, hopefully he's fast asleep, but if he's awake, um, can tell us. Give us some more detail on how this gets to the printer, um, and, and when, if you're there, Mark.
Thanks, Don. Um, so this um, the, once the selectmen determine what is going into the bylaw. Um, we will work with council to have all of the articles reviewed. And a final warrant prepared for selectman's signature on October fifth. At that point, um, it would go to the printer. Um, we would obviously provide copies to have it posted, um, and. You know, we'll, we'll move, we'll move from there, but that's in, in short verse, that's how it's gonna go.
I think the planning board, thank you, I think the planning board intends to keep the public hearing open. Uh, it, it'll be on our agenda for the twenty-seventh. Um, and that would probably consist of uh either. Uh, an update from your selectmen's meeting tomorrow night. Um, and if there's any action required by the board, whether we would take it on the twenty-seventh. Or move it to a, a meeting in October. So, and, and probably like we usually do with almost all of our warrant articles, especially zoning. Would be to keep the public hearing open right up until uh the town, the night of town meeting or the day of town meeting. Um, so that we're, we're allowed uh legally allowed to take in more information. And then um, as a result of that, maybe make some changes, um, which I, I would hope we don't have to do. But for such a um. You know, comp- complex uh zoning uh piece. Uh, it's, it's possible that there'll be some polishing language or um. Uh, other type of changes that, that might happen a- and as a result of the continued public hearing, so. Unless the planning board uh decides, majority decides to close the public hearing, then we'll probably keep it open right up until the last. The last breath before the uh, the town, the town meeting. Anybody else, anything else?
Mr. Chairman, if it's uh all right with you, I would like to ask for a motion to adjourn from the Board of Selectmen.
I move that we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, uh, Malinowski?
Hi.
Stivers?
Aye.
Dennington?
Aye.
Bracio, aye, and Mr. Chairman, thank you again for all that you did tonight in moving this forward, much appreciated.
And thank you guys, thank you very much.
Have a good night, everyone.
Uh, did the EDC ever go into uh?
No.
No, we do not, we, we did not have a quorum, so we don't, we, we do not need to uh motion to close.
Okay, Mr. Mills? We can't hear you.
I make a motion, we continue the public hearing for the downtown business district or whatever we're calling it. Downtown district to uh, September twenty-seventh at seven oh five.
Seven fifteen.
Seven fifteen PM.
Second.
Most has been made in seconded to continue the public hearing. Any discussion? Hearing on all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yes?
Blue hen, yes?
Mr. Mills?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Most has been made in seconded, any discussion, hearing on all in favor, Morris, yes?
Uh, great job, Mr. Chairman, Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?